Good evening. We'll call the Lakewood Planning Commission to order for our regular meeting on March 6, 2024. We're only a few minutes late, and I would ask our clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Buckley.
Here.
Commissioner Furman.
Here.
Commissioner Grablounis.
Commissioner Ketner.
Here.
Commissioner Kolkmeier.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Here.
Commissioner Peters.
Here.
And Commissioner Grablounis, very late in the day, informed me that he would not be in attendance this evening.
All right. Thank you. I believe we have a quorum. We will go to item three, Lakewood Public Art Plan. This is an informational presentation from staff, and if you could just introduce yourself to us and begin your presentation.
Yep. I can do that if you want.
All right. Good evening, Commission. Thanks so much for allowing us time again on your agenda tonight. I'm Alexis Moore, Principal Planner with the city's Comprehensive Planning and Research Division. It's nice to be back here again with you this evening. I'm joined by my colleague Lain Godsy, who's the city's Arts Programming Curator in the Heritage, Culture, and the Arts Division of the Community Resources Department. And Lain and I are going to present on the update to the city's public art plan. Lain is the project manager, and I'm supporting from the planning side and was involved in the process to create the 2013 Public Art Plan. We also have one of our consultants on the team, Kendall Peterson, with us tonight, and she's available for any questions or discussion after the presentation if the commission desires. Just to provide a quick overview of our agenda for the evening, I'll give a kind of update on who is involved on the project team.
Oh, are you?
No.
Okay. And then an update on the two deliverables that are part of this project. I will turn it over to Lain to give background on the history of Lakewood's public art program and updates on some accomplishments since the first public art plan was adopted in 2013. And then Lain will share a little bit more about the importance of public art as we think about how we move forward with our public art master plan. And Lain will also share some information on the process to date and report out on some of the community outreach and what we're hearing so far. And then I'll wrap it up talking about the Guidelines and Procedures document, which is also being developed with this process, and our next steps. Quick way of introductions, we have a small internal working group that includes Lain and myself, as well as Michelle Nierling, who's the Division Manager of the Heritage, Culture, and the Arts Division, and Allison Centele, who is also in Community Resources and supporting with marketing and outreach on this project. The city hired a consultant team led by There Squared, which includes Kendall and Jill Stillwell, who are public art experts and have done a lot of public art master planning and policy work with communities across the state. So we're fortunate to be able to work with them to provide that expertise and guidance on our project. And we've also formed another internal advisory group, which includes city staff from the departments you see here, Economic Development, Community Resources, including Lain's group with Heritage, Culture, and the Arts, as well as Parks. We have staff from planning, both my group, the Comprehensive Planning and Research Division, as well as Planning and Development Assistance Team, since public art is really comes about in a lot of different ways in Lakewood. It's not just housed in Lain's group. And so it's really important that we're all collaborating and working together as we think about the long-term vision, as well as our policies and documents and guidelines that help us move that forward. As I mentioned, we have two documents that are being developed as part of this project. The first is the visionary Comprehensive Lakewood Public Art Plan. And as I said, we have a plan in place now that was adopted as a comprehensive plan amendment back in 2013 and approved by City Council as a special area plan to the overall comprehensive plan. We're at a point, obviously, 10-plus years later, that it's time to reflect on our values as a community around public art and our vision going forward for public art, and to update that in this updated document. This, Lain will talk a little bit more about kind of where we're at in that process. The other document is the not-so-exciting internal document that we call the Public Art Guidelines and Procedures. There was a Guidelines and Procedures document created in 2013, and really, it helps us administer the public art program internally. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, but just for planning commissions information, that document is internal, flexible, working document. It's not going to be brought forward as an adopted document. It's not an implementation plan, if you will. I will turn it over to Lain to talk a little bit more about her slides.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alexis.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Lain Godsy, as Alexis said, and I am the Arts Programming Curator in the Heritage, Culture, and the Arts Division of Community Resources. And I'm really excited to be talking about public art with you tonight. But I'm going to take it all the way back to the beginning and talk a little bit about a brief history of the program. So in 1995, a group of really passionate Lakewood Arts Council members got together and started putting works of art all around the city to enrich the cultural vibrancy of our community. And since then, 17 years in the making, works accumulated, and then momentum for a program really grew. So the ACIC Public Art Committee got together and recommended that a public plan be initiated to really formalize a public art program in the city. And then in 2013, HCA, in collaboration with the Comprehensive Planning Department, got together and created the plan that you see in front of you or behind you. I can't tell. And that plan was the guiding document for the last 10-plus years. Since then, the public art program in Lakewood has matured into a really rich cultural amenity. Public art is initiated, as Alexis mentioned, and implemented through a multifaceted and really collaborative approach here in the city. It's across many departments and in collaboration with community partners. And while HCA oversees the permanent collection, projects really emanate from a variety of sources, including, like we said, cultural, community resources, so that's HCA, and parks, but also planning and private development, the sustainability's enhanced development menu is really critical, the zoning ordinance, of course, the Artline Framework Plan, city council, grants, donations, public works, and economic development. And artworks range from temporary community-based projects to iconic, really large sculptures. And over the last 10 years... Thank you. Oh, can I use this?
Yes.
Perfect. And over the last 10 years, many of the 2013 Public Art Master Plan's goals have been achieved, and some of those highlights are, of course, the iconic work that you probably pass every single time you come into this building here on the plaza. We had the 50th Anniversary Project at Addenbrook Park, which was a city council initiative. We have created the Lakewood Public Art Committee, which, when in practice, is a wonderful resource for volunteers from across the city to get involved in public art. Temporary projects, like the Landmark Project, have added versatility to the program and really activated park spaces across all five wards. The 40 West Artline, of course, has grown to be a really important community connector. We now have more than 60 works of art in the collection, and partnerships with our community organizations like the Alameda Connects, Business Improvement District, and West Colfax have really grown into important connections.
Sorry, I jumped on.
Oh, no, you're good. You're...
I know. It's the left. It's kind of a tricky... There we go. I think it's the left side that goes down.
Totally fine. So with just over a decade of experience now, it's really important to reflect on why public art still matters. It's a reflection of our past, present, and future, and public art engages social interaction, creates a rich tapestry of culture within our community. And according to a report from Americans for the Arts, among other things, public art is accessible and free for all and is a part of our daily lived experience. It reflects our society, enhances and humanizes our built spaces, and is a really important economic driver. Thank you. And because Lakewood so prioritizes arts and culture, we were really eager to update the Lakewood Public Art Plan for the next 10 years. So the Connect, Create, and Discover and Create Plan, in consultation with There Squared, kicked off in earnest in August of 2023 with a condition assessment and gap analysis. Then in October, the consultants created an artful engagement at Sider Days accompanied by a bilingual survey that ran through the end of the year. Then they embarked upon research, stakeholder and focus group engagements, and those took place over the winter months up into the last few weeks. And then through the spring, the plan will be drafted. We plan to come back to you guys in late summer, early fall, and then the plan will go to City Council for adoption by the end of the year. So community feedback, as you know, is critical to these processes, and we're seeking input from a variety of sources. From artful community engagements, bilingual surveys with more than 200 responses, pop-up mapping at the 40 West Art Hub, which is, of course, a gathering place for the West Colfax Neighborhood Association and other community groups. We've placed QR code yard signs in parks and recreation centers that are driving folks to our project page. We have an artful engagement activity that existed in the entire month of February in the Corner Gallery of the Cultural Center across the way. We've had arts email newsletters to Lakewood residents, a targeted survey for developers, conducted focus groups with artists, and upcoming, we have engagements at the Earth Day event and during Inspire Arts Month in the month of June. So Alexis will talk a little bit more about that in the next steps. So what have we learned so far from the community? Well, they really love art just as much as we do. In fact, 85% of survey respondents said that art was very important or somewhat important, with 65...
Five.
Whoa. That was exciting. I'd just like to keep you on your toes, the arts people, you know? 65% stated that it was very important. And when we asked the public in what ways art adds value, the top responses were "it adds color and vibrancy to our city, provides free and accessible artwork, and creates a sense of place and makes public spaces more memorable." And then when we talk to the community about what type of art that they want to see more of, so far, folks are saying things like functional art, so benches, bike racks, things that they can use, murals, of course, were very popular, and then earthworks and environmental art. We've learned from our survey that 88% of respondents thought that Lakewood should invest much more or the same amount on public art. So that's really exciting to see that confirmation from the public for public art here in the city of Lakewood. And our word-mapping activity is some of the words that community members have used to describe how they envision art for the future of Lakewood have been inclusive, vibrant, and inspirational. So all of this early feedback sets us up to see a really vibrant vision for public art in Lakewood. And I'll turn it back over to Alexis, and she's going to dive into guidelines and procedures, the fun stuff.
I beg to differ. I think Lain gets to cover the fun stuff. Thanks so much. That was great. As Lain said, this second document is really important, mostly internally for us, as we figure out how best to really have a streamlined, transparent process for administering the public art program in Lakewood. Because we are a unique system of collaboration with all of these different entities, we want to be able to have a document that we can hand over to whomever is administering this program in the future or staff internally. I think what we're finding is we're talking to our colleagues within the city that people don't always know what to do when a public art project presents itself as an opportunity. And, you know, even if they have some money available, who do they go to? How does the process work? Who gets to select the art? What happens if with accession and deaccession of art, if art has to be removed for some reason? How does the art selection process get formed, depending on how art is coming into the community, whether it's through private development or grants or through the Artline project? So I'm really excited for this document to get figured out. You all are very familiar now with the Artline project, and that was one of the things that we talked about through that process as well. And it's exciting to have cross-collaboration with internal partners on that project. Lain's very involved with the Artline, as you can imagine, as well as the overall public art program in the city. So this document is being developed in tandem with the public art plan, but really is this internal, flexible, working document. And it's also really helpful as systems and processes change. Just from submitting a permit for a mural right now has changed in the past couple of months, as we've gone from a different system to this e-track it system. And our policy and guidelines document hasn't caught up with that. So we're really excited to get this updated and to use it to inform and develop other resources, flow charts, and documents that we can hand to developers, to our community partners who help to bring public art into Lakewood to make it easier, more streamlined, and transparent for everybody. So again, just this won't be adopted, but is wanting everyone to know that we are developing this document as well. And finally, wrapping up on our next steps, as Lain has shared, we are, you have had a lot of community outreach and engagement, really strong support so far for this project, but there are some other activities still for the public to get involved in, as we have a really fun, interactive mapping tool on the project website, if any of you are interested. The website is lakewoodtogether.org backslash public art. There's a QR code on the next slide. But you can go in and drop a pin on places in Lakewood that you'd like to see public art in the future and share what types of art you'd like to experience there. We also have some quick polls and short surveys that we'll be pushing out through the website to continue to gather community input. And then as that document, the Public Art Plan, is drafted and ready for public consumption and review and comment, it'll be posted here as well. As Lain said, hopefully, we'll have a beautiful, non-snowy day for the Earth Day Festival on April 27 down at Heritage Lakewood Belmar Park. We had the Artful Engagement in October. We'll be having this other one in April to test the ideas with the community, the vision, the draft goals, and make sure that the feedback we've heard is being reflected in the draft public art plan information. And then, of course, the whole month of June, which I think also speaks to the progress of the public art program here. It used to be the week of Inspire in Lakewood, and it's now stretched out over a whole month. And so it just gives us a lot of opportunity to engage with so many different citizens and community members throughout Lakewood as we share out information about this plan and promote public comment and review on the website. And as Lain said, similar to the process for the 40 West Artline Framework Plan, we will be bringing the final draft public art plan back to you all for review and requests for adoption later this year, tentatively late summer, early fall, with the requests that be adopted as an amendment to the comprehensive plan and then bringing it to City Council by the end of the year. So with that, we are very grateful for all the time tonight as we share this informational update. Again, no action requested at this point, but this is the project information. Please share this out with any of your networks. Way in, share your feedback. We'd love to hear your thoughts. That's our contact information. If anyone has questions or comments after tonight's presentation, and the three of us are available for any other discussion. Thanks.
Thank you.
Great. Don't go away.
We will sit down right here, if that's okay.
Yes. Thank you very much, Ms. Moore, Ms. Godsy, and Ms. Peterson as well. Do Commissioners have any questions? I have a few. I'm curious, what are the major barriers you're encountering to getting additional art? Is it just a funding issue? Is it concern about content? Is it... What are those barriers?
My voice is loud enough. I don't think that's...
Well, I think to record.
Thank you. Barriers exist in several areas. One of them is funding. So it was very encouraging to see from the public that they were excited about the opportunity to fund public art. In 2020, our funding was suspended, and this is a real opportunity for us to look at ways to reinvigorate that spending and commitment to public art. So we've had dollars to be able to continue on in some maintenance, to contribute as a collaborative partner with some outside organizations. We've participated in opportunities to create grants through the Artline, and work has continued, but we're really excited about what's next. So that is a barrier. Staffing is another barrier that we're looking at being able to overcome. We're a small team in HCA, and my position has purview over many areas, including Washington Heights Art Center and arts programming and exhibitions. So we're looking at opportunities for us to define how staffing can be better accommodating of all of the projects and the really diverse array of initiation for public art. So we're having projects that are coming from planning. We're having projects that are coming from public works. We're having projects that are coming from community resources. And all of that means that we need a consolidated staffing directive to be able to operate it more functionally and more, in a more streamlined way. And then I think in terms of other obstacles, I think it's just really having a clear and identifiable... Clear and identifiable vision for the guidelines and procedures. We're actually, when we say we're excited about that, that's not an understatement or an overstatement in any way. We quite literally are very excited to have some streamlined guidelines to help everybody facilitate artwork in a way that makes sense and is easy to follow, a document that's a guiding directive that can be nimble and change as our mechanisms for public art change.
Thanks, Lain. If I could just add to that or expand on that. Thanks for that question. That's a really important question. And I think the policies around how we get public art in place is huge and creating more streamlined approach. And what we're hearing is park staff wants to help implement public art but don't know how to do it. And developers actually, I think, frequently are interested in using that as one of the enhanced development menu options. But I think it's so convoluted right now, and it becomes cumbersome. And if we can figure out how to help make it easier for them and get the money into the hands of local artists to work with the development community to really bring beauty and sense of place, I think that a lot of developers are excited about that opportunity as well. So I think that, again, just points to streamlining our processes and buttoning things up to make it easier for everybody.
And you've anticipated my next question. I was curious whether any developer has taken advantage of the art component on the enhanced development menu.
It's starting to happen.
Okay.
I'll let Alexis expand upon that. We've had a few opportunities to engage with some developers. At some points, they're reaching a barrier where it becomes cumbersome to activate this tool because of the systems and processes. But we do have developers who are starting to get interested in this, and you can talk specifically about projects if you're wanting to.
Yeah, exactly. I don't think we have had anything come through the enhanced development menu yet, but a lot of conversations around it and trying to figure out a path forward. But through other zoning ordinance requirements in terms of not meeting plaza space and other... What's the word I'm looking for? Pause. I'm probably sitting there thinking of it right now. But there are some projects that are coming in that are using public art that way, which is exciting. And as you know, with the adoption of the 40 West Artline design standards and guidelines, new site plans on the Artline on Lamar Street and Colfax are required to implement public art as part of their projects. So that's another really exciting opportunity for us to get more public art in Lakewood.
Wonderful. Well, from my perspective, this is such an incredibly valuable program. It really goes to the heart of the excitement of living in neighborhoods and being surrounded by art everywhere we go. So that is wonderful. Great appreciation. And we look forward to seeing the actual plan. Any other questions before we release you? Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you. I'm curious if, as part of this plan, there's any focus on maybe creating other areas like the successful Artline and other places in the city where, you know, those linear art installations right out there in the public. I can think of the area around Billows Park. It's all within a park, but it, you know, it's kind of the one other thing in the city that exists that's maybe a little like the Artline where there's art as you stroll along a path. Is there any thought of expanding that to other areas and some of the other components, like, you know, design guidelines that would require public art and so forth?
Yeah, I think we'll see where our vision and mission guide our goals for this new plan. But ultimately, I think there are community partners who are engaging in creative processes that are similar, similar, but unique in their own way, like the Alameda Connects group, who is creating wonderful art walks all along Alameda Connects. Also, there are areas within Lakewood that are art deserts, that we have not had the opportunity to activate yet. So those will be really important to consider. So those will be really important to consider as we look at priorities, is where, where do we need to create cultural opportunities for engagement? And, and I think oftentimes, things happen organically. You know, the, the idea of placemaking and neighborhood generation and creating a sense of place was really important. I can't speak on it as eloquently as Alexis can, but for the Art Line. And I imagine that other neighborhoods will have other priorities and goals. And as we look at, at where art needs to exist next, we'll kind of see where that takes us. But yeah, I think it's a really wonderful amenity to have and something to get people out and to activate the places. So we were encouraged by people's interest in earthworks and environmental art because that means it's a good opportunity to activate our spaces that people are already walking in.
Right. Okay, thank you.
And if I may just jump in, I think, I don't know if Laine has mentioned the big M word, but maintenance and funding for what public art exists. And you mentioned Bellows Parks specifically. And Kendall's group, you know, did an assessment and inventory of all of our public art and gaps analysis. And I think that's going to be a huge finding, is we need some funding to make sure that what we have is maintained and to daylight and educate people that it's there because it is a cool little treasure.
Yeah, that's good to know, as part of it that looks old.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and that's not a barrier to creation. That's a barrier to sustainability, you know? Something that we need to look into the future for is how do we make sure that our work in perpetuity is there and accessible and beautiful? Yep.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Thank you, Chair. I just was curious if there's any capacity within your group to be reaching out to any of the local colleges, like Red Rocks Community College. I know REMCAT is right on the Art Line essentially. And I know there's been some difficulty in marrying that school with the Art Line for reasons I can't quite understand, but it's, it's an anomaly a little bit. But, and even high schools, I mean, I think that seems like kind of low-hanging fruit and a way to sort of bring art and engagement in a fairly affordable manner, I would think, because students would be excited by that. But I was just curious if there was any conversations around that.
I'm going to answer that one. Hi, thank you. I'm Kendall Peterson. We actually have had a number of different conversations with artists and some groups around the community, and that actually has come up quite a bit, the way in which we might be able to engage. There's a huge amount of artists just living and living and working in Lakewood, which is kind of unusual for some of the work that I do. People love to, there's spaces here that you can create in your backyard and that kind of thing. So, so there's that, there's REMCAT, there's Rocky Mountain, sorry, Red Rocks Community College, and your high schools, as you mentioned. There was a lot of discussion around the possibility of creating a roster of artists at some point, and this is something that would take staff availability and that kind of thing. But creating a roster of local artists that could be called upon to do work in developments and, you know, could be selected through projects and that kind of thing. So I think we're, we're looking at ways to maybe sort of blur those lines between those colleges and who's a public artist and who isn't, and, and how to bring along some of those communities into public art, because public art is a great way for a lot of artists to make a living. So, and also doing some training. There was a lot of discussion with the artist group that they need more information on how to be a public artist, how to make their way in and how to kind of, so that's another thing that the groups can do here is host some, some sessions, brown bag sessions or something like that with the artist community to see if there, there's an interest out there to do that. So there's a lot of really great outreach that could be done with those, those groups.
I will also say, I think you're, you really hit the nail on the head. I mean, we already have great relationships with many of, of our local high schools and Red Rocks Community College. We host exhibitions annually for a lot of these groups, and so it feels like a really natural next step to see how we can create the next generation of public artists and keep that program really sustainable. Yeah, you're right. It's a great, great opportunity.
Is there, can I, is there any capacity? And I know when you don't have enough staff, bringing on young people that have no training is also additional work to bring people up to speed. But is there any capacity for bringing students in as interns or, you know, planning students or, you know, planning and architecture students or art students or, I don't know, any, and even high school seniors that are looking in that direction? I'm just curious if that's a, I don't know if there's capacity for that within your group now.
No, I appreciate that question. And we tried a pilot program. We were very honored to be selected for the Diversity in the Arts Internship Program last year, and we actually wrote that into our application. We write a job description, and they can kind of choose from a variety of options that we're offering. So we're, we're essentially matched, like a matchmaking partnership with this Diversity in the Arts Group that is funded by the Bonfey Stanton Organization in collaboration with Our Students League and SEFD. So it's, it's a wonderful opportunity for us to get an intern, and we very are much hopeful this year we were selected again. And we'd love for that DETA intern to select an opportunity to work in public art and exhibitions, which was written into the, to the job description. But we'll see. I think that you're right. It's about staffing and availability to really build out and nurture a mentorship relationship. And, but it's a, it's a wonderful idea, and Alexis and I have had conversations about opportunities to bring in interns in either planning or in HCA to help us out with some of these, these real needs.
Really exciting. Thank you for presenting again tonight.
Commissioner Peters?
Thank you, Chair Kokomire. I want to follow up on Commissioner O'Neill's question about outreach, and it was really encouraging to hear all of the outreach. This is a very practical question because I actually know a teenager who is an artist who does murals and had asked me, how can I get involved? How could I paint a mural somewhere in Lakewood? So very practical question, how do I respond?
Right now, our answer is have them give me a call.
Okay.
Wait, if, seriously, I mean, we're always on the lookout for new artists to work with. And right now, while we're not in a production modality until we get this plan finished, there are opportunities. For instance, we're creating a mini mural project at Lakewood Park in the summer months with our campers, our teenage camp group, and they're creating a mural on the dugouts and on all the planters. We're also going to be working with parks in the coming months to figure out some mural boards. So we're going to, we have the mural boards, and we're going to take those and look for an opportunity to get some artists, some local artists, to create artwork for the new pedestrian underpasses at the Bear Creek open, open space. So there are always opportunities, and I'd love to meet new artists, young artists.
Do you have a card you can give me before you leave?
You know, my office is right across the way, so I'll, I'll pop over and get a, a whole stack of cards.
Great, thank you.
Terrific. Thank you so much for presenting, and we look forward to seeing you back.
Thank you all very much, and we look forward to your feedback in the process and coming back again in the fall.
Great.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Item four, other legislative matters. This is the issue the City Council requested recommendations on us regarding proactive community engagement processes for major site plan review and park adjacent overlay guidelines. We did have an opportunity to get some public comment at our last meeting. I did put public comment on again for this matter, and I see that we have a couple folks signed up, so we will bring you forward. Just as a reminder, this is not general public comment. We, as a commission, only take comment on agenda items, and we are not allowed to focus on the merits of any particular project, but we are eager to hear additional comments on how we can change the processes, the procedures, to give people a greater sense of community engagement and a feeling that they are having an opportunity to impact proposed projects. The first person I have is, I think it's Cecilia Greenman.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm in Ward Two. I agree with the previous speakers that spoke at the last Planning Commission meeting of the necessity of community notification as part of the site plan review process and the value of natural open space, not just playing fields. One measure that I think would definitely help the review process is to require an environmental assessment of a major site plan. Full disclosure, I am a member of Save Belmar Park Group, and we've been told by our lawyer that nature has no legal rights. However, if Lakewood aspires to be an inclusive community, we need to understand that humans are not the only ones inhabiting the planet. Unlike the planning department, we recognize that not all properties are the same. Therefore, environmental assessments which should be tailored to the site locations. Development of a brownfield site or a site that has been previously occupied would involve less review. However, a proposed development, such as that at 777 South Yarrow Street, with 72 mature trees adjacent to existing natural park area, should experience more detailed investigation that would include an inventory of the flora and the mega and microfauna that is present. There then should be subsequent analysis of how the development would affect the existing environment through construction noise, elimination of trees with associated hardscape replacement, alteration of morning sunlight entering the park, and increased site visits to the park with more dog waste. The city might choose to have an ecologist on staff or could hire a firm on a contract basis, much as the state land board does for its properties. I also feel that a site evaluation should include the effects of air pollution from a proposed development and water pollution from the use of fertilizers and pesticides. Presumably, the volume of water usage is managed by water districts. A summary of findings would be an ecological cost benefit of a project to the community. There are precious few remaining areas in Lakewood, such as Belmar Park. For the planning director to decide unilaterally, the procedural review of a development adjacent to the park should be the same as for Chewes in downtown Belmar, so as not to show favoritism to developers, shows either incredible ignorance or else disdain for the people who use and value the beauty and serenity of Belmar Park. I hope this protocol can be remedied and that the city does not wind up thinking in hindsight, what have we done? Thank you.
Hang on just a second. I want to see if any commissioners have any questions for you. Commissioner Buckley?
Sure, thank you. We're not allowed to talk about specifics of a project. So I think this question I'm going to ask is, is broad in general, but you mentioned an address, and, and so I'm thinking of that address a little bit too. You mentioned that these environmental assessments you envisioned being most useful on greenfield development, is that right?
I would put them on any major site.
On any, okay. Yeah, you, you made a distinction between greenfield and brownfields, but that's important to me, to understand what you're saying, because of course technically 777 South Yarrow is, well, I would call it a brownfield development, right? There's, there's an office building there, there's parking lots there, and there's trees there, but they, you know, there's been development there for a long time. So just trying to understand your, how you want to classify things. If you're inclusive of everything, that's the easiest way to classify things, I suppose. So thank you.
I just have one, and without question, I understand the frustration on that project. I think our goal, and I'd be curious your reaction to this, our goal should be to have processes where it doesn't really matter who the person is, right? If we have a process that is transparent and fair, one of the things that's troubled me through these discussions have been criticism of individual people, as if they are to blame. And I think you referred to it as ignorance or disdain. What would make you feel comfortable? That it is the system that's working, the process that's working, such that you would not feel that an individual person should be criticized for being a decision maker in that process? Does that make sense?
As our group has looked through the municipal codes and the emails that are regarding this project, we've seen that there has been discussion among the planning staff as, well, you know, this, this may be too big, or this may be, maybe we could do this or that. And from what we've gotten from the emails is that those ideas were just kind of shut down. That may be due to, you know, the pushback from the developer, but I don't think that what, from what we heard from the planning director at the last meeting, he was, he said that he wanted to treat every project the same so as not to be showing that one developer is getting something that another isn't. And that may be because, I don't know, there's some legal possibility of a lawsuit. But what we would, or what I would like to see is that some of these projects be open to the Planning Commission more than just the planning staff, Planning Commission and then City Council. And we heard last time that that has not happened in 12 years. Why is that? I mean, it certainly can't be that every project that comes before the, the planning staff is the same. I mean, we see that. So I guess what, to answer your question, is we would like a little bit more discrimination as to how these projects are addressed.
Okay. Thank you. Laney James, please. Laney? My apologies.
Well, related, thank you for being here and for the opportunity to speak. Related to your question, I went to the planning office today hoping to talk to a planner, which turned out not to be possible. But there were, I was, went, went to the website, and as best I could tell, there are 116 projects listed there. And I certainly don't feel necessary to look at all of them. The first two, one was 10, it sounded like 10 units, and the next one, one. And I think number of units is one of the issues that is really important. And I've shared about the Commons, Belmar Commons, having 45 town patio homes on five acres. I'm in a town home complex that has 108 townhomes on 7.3 acres. So for the first one, that's nine families, nine units on an acre. Ours is just under 15. And when you get into the hundreds, that's a lot, 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 lot more people. And I think that's one of the issues. And we talk about number of levels. There is a four-story building built near Jewel and Wadsworth, and it's on comparatively a lot of land for what seems to be true for some other projects. And it's... And it's next to commercial properties, so it's not to be contrasted with other things around it. So, you know, the number is important. Something else I'd like to speak to is historical significance. And I'm in a group that walks at parks four days a week. Belmar has been our go-to park on the weekend, and we go to Stonehouse Park, we go to Edinburgh Park. I'd like to talk about those three parks, in terms of having historical structures on them. And we can see the Stonehouse Park, it's been really beautiful what's been done in Edinburgh Park, because there's an original house sits there, and the house was partially removed, and it's mainly the fireplace sits there now. But that was put out for art connection, and what was done is really, really beautiful. And I would wish to see something like that for...there's a caretaker park at Cottage, and I don't know if that's on the original site, but I think the original site is important to me.
Others may have questions. My question is, and we've heard this comment several times, which is that projects of a certain scale need more review. Do you have a thought about what you think that cutoff is, that would make it something that would require a public hearing?
That's a hard question, but I think things that are adjacent to civic properties, and park properties, waterways, those are factors, to me.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you so much. And, Mr. Rice, do we have anyone else who...
We do. The lady behind me wishes to speak as well.
Great. If you would just give us your name, and tell us your comments.
Good evening, thank you so much. My name is Linda Stopp, and I live in Ward Four. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but I have been involved with both Clean Energy Lakewood and Save Belmar Park, so I'm really interested in protecting our environment for now and the future. And as public art was described earlier, this is part of what makes Lakewood unique, is our rich heritage of parks and open spaces that are truly unique. And what I understand that we're discussing tonight is how to get more civic engagement, particularly because what had happened at 777 South Yarrow is a bit of an unfortunate, not even a bit, it's an abomination, actually, of what should have taken place, to make a decision about such a unique, precious piece of land that is historical, as Lainey had mentioned, that has great cultural significance to our city, and that it's not, you know, something that's similar to other areas where properties are being, you know, discussed for development. So, to answer the question about how can we make a difference here in our processes, it would be definitely to make sure, not just the council and the Planning Commission, but the citizens that live in our city have a say in what's going to happen to our open spaces. They're bringing their kids, bringing up their children in this space, in this beautiful city, and maybe even their grandchildren, and I'm sure they don't want the destruction by developers of our precious land. This is what makes Lakewood unique. Why did I move here? I love Lakewood for that rural feel, I love Lakewood for its uniqueness and its beauty. So, what should change, really, is the process, the system. I don't think that the people who made those decisions were, you know, thinking in an evil way of any sort, but I find it negligence, because if you...you cannot look at a piece of property that has so much value to our city, and just make those kinds of decisions that were without true analysis of the significance, environmental significance, cultural significance, value to our city, and just, you know, make that kind of decision without any input from anywhere else, it's too much discretion, and that definitely has to change. We have to look at our ordinances, and make sure that our ordinances line up with our plans, our sustainability plans, our comprehensive plans, to protect this beautiful city. So, that's what I'd like to see, is absolute citizen involvement. And it's a process, it's a cultural change, it's not something that'll happen overnight. But we need to put emphasis on that, create perhaps a mechanism, a little, you know, I don't know, a department or something of citizen engagement, so this can work for the future. And as far as right now, no development on Belmar Park, none. We can't do that to our precious park. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this topic? Okay, thank you. We'll close the public comment on that, and we'll move to an opportunity for us to discuss this as a commission, with the goal of trying to figure out what specific ideas we would like to potentially recommend, and see to what extent we need to flesh those out. I've given this a lot of thought, I bet everyone has, and I am happy to defer to other commissioners to initiate any suggestions they have, and if no one wants to do that, I'll jump in, but I'm happy to start with other commissioners. Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I agree, I have done a lot of thinking about the comment we received at the last meeting, and reflecting on what we could do with that. Before the meeting, I gave all the commissioners a kind of a two-page summary, longer than I wanted it to be, unfortunately, of...
Commissioner.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. My apologies, Commissioner Peters, I thought I handed one to everyone. Yeah, so I was not able to distribute this publicly before the meeting, so, Chairman, I think if I could...if you will, I'll need a few minutes to describe it, and I might prefer to go down there, because that way I can use the overhead projector to put these sheets up, and the public can see what I've written down while I'm describing it.
Without objection, you can assume the podium.
Thank you. I think this microphone's a little bit closer to my height, so that font might be small for the public watching, but at least there's some idea. So, one idea that...
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Would you like to make them larger and do one sheet at a time?
Sure.
And I can zoom in a bit? Okay, let's start with that, and center it for me, please, and then, yep, and I'll zoom in, and we may have to shift it, but I can make it larger.
That's great, thank you. Okay, at the previous meeting, we talked a little bit about possibilities of using the enhanced development menu to provide a mechanism for greater public input, and so I thought about that. The goal, in my mind, of this process is to really build trust, and to build a process where members of the community who are, you know, most impacted and most concerned, can truly collaborate with a developer. You know, my thought is that, in a general way, you know, the developer is in the driver's seat of what the design of a project looks like. Yes, they have to conform to the zoning code, which dictates at a broad level what is and isn't allowed, you know, but they're actually in charge of the design, and, you know, there's... When projects become controversial, when the community's unhappy with them, you know, the best solution in my mind is to provide a collaborative opportunity for residents to be able to feel like they influence the design. That's how you really have a voice, if, you know, if you're speaking with and engaging with the person who actually has the most control over what the design of the project is. And so this is really about collaboration. I threw out some numbers in here, all these numbers are subject to change and discussion amongst ourselves, et cetera. But in general, for projects that require 100 or more points on the enhanced development menu, and that would be projects over 100,000 square feet in size, could be a different number, that's the number I picked, would be required to get 30%, again, kind of a number I picked, of the points on that enhanced development menu, based on community input. And so we do this through a three-step process. So, step one, we have a public meeting, we notify the public meeting in the same process that we already have for rezonings, that's already spelled out in Chapter 17.2 of the zoning code, so easy to replicate for a different purpose. And, but at that meeting, instead of talking about a rezoning, or whatever, we're talking about, you know, in a broad way, what the project is doing, what are they building, and talking about the enhanced development menu, and what it requires, that, you know, you need, this project needs about so many points, and we have these kind of options of sustainable building materials, we have art, you know, we have public amenities, there's all sorts of things on that menu, I know the commissioners are all familiar with them. And so soliciting feedback at a public meeting, specifically on what those amenities are, but also taking in comments at that meeting about other concerns about the project that are outside the scope of the menu, and that gets incorporated later. I would also propose that some number of points be, you know, awarded to developers who really try to seriously engage the public at this meeting. We know from rezonings that, you know, developers don't want a lot of people at these public meetings. From their eyes, that means that it's controversial, and, you know, people are just going to be angry and yell at them there. We want this to be collaborative, and we don't want developers to take that, you know, negative view that I think they are inclined to take in a lot of cases. And so, it could be good to incentivize them with more bonus points on the EDM to actually have a lot of people show up at the meeting, actually, you know, engage in social media, engage in places where people are, you know, target towards underrepresented groups, you know, non-English speakers, renters, you know, parents by providing childcare. There's a lot of ideas we can do to increase participation at the traditional public meeting. I think all of us have been to a public meeting or two that's not well-attended. I would like to see public meetings better attended, that's, you know, more diverse and inclusive of more voices. So in that same vein, we can solicit input on a website, you know, make the developer make a website, the city can link to it, the website can be advertised on the same, you know, postcard mailings that advertise the public meeting, so people who can't show up to a public meeting, you know, can go online and provide, you know, comments to the developer on, at the meeting. And then the third step, which I think is really key to the process, we would have to identify some sort of process, I don't have clear ideas of this yet, of making a stakeholder group. It needs to be some manageable size, but a group that can meet, you know, that's representative broadly of the concerned community, and the developer of the larger project. And they meet over the course of the project, I would suggest, you know, after each, you know, formal review, during the review process, you know, Mr. Parker and Mr. Rice told us two weeks ago, there's, you know, depending on the size of the project and the quality of the submitted, typically about three to six cycles of review of, you know, of planning and engineering documents, and architectural documents submitted to the city for review. So, I think after each one of those cycles, would be a good place to get the stakeholders together, and review the latest plans, and discuss about it. And what are we trying to do with all this? Let's see, it's in, this last section, incorporating design suggestions to the community, is really the heart of it. Before it gets approved, at the end of the day, the applicant has to submit to a city a detailed report listing all the public comments they've gotten from all the websites, from all the public meetings, from all the stakeholder groups, summarize those comments, and demonstrate, based on what those comments are, that at least 30% of the EDM points, or whatever percent we end up selecting, are representative of what the public comment is asking for. And adding on to that, because not every public comment, and everything that every member of the public might want to see, is going to be something that's on the enhanced development menu already, I think it would be important to broaden the scope of the open option, and so that specific issues to a project, specific site concerns of a neighborhood, or of a building, or of a place, that are frankly challenging to anticipate in advance, when we do something like a comprehensive plan, or when we write a generally applicable zoning ordinance, and we make a zone district on a particular property that's also on many other properties throughout the city, it's, at that level of laying out the rules, that's very important, it's critical, of course, but there's always going to be something we can't think of that's unique. And so to the extent that the community is coherently asking for something that uniquely fits that purpose, again, I would suggest that the EDM, since they have to, the developer has to achieve points on this anyways, that we give credit to the developers who incorporate those thoughts, right? And with an ongoing working stakeholder group over the course of the project, you know, it would be my hope that there's enough face-to-face meetings, just enough, you know, rapport, enough trust, you know, between a group of people from the community who's representative of maybe broader concerns in the community, and the developer who, again, is the person designing the project, has the most influence over what a project ultimately is, you know, has this process where they are required to take into account specifically some of that feedback, and also on top of that, further incentivized, you know, even outside the scope of what we might consider on the enhanced development menu, to incorporate those kind of ideas. The enhanced development menu is about sustainability, I think here it's important to note that one aspect of sustainability is, you know, is social connectedness, right? There's a social aspect to sustainability. It is not just a synonym for environmentalism, although certainly, you know, caring about the future sustainability of the environment is a key component of sustainability, it's not all of it. You know, we're not going to have sustainable development in the city, i.e. something that can be perpetuated forward in future generations, unless the people support it, unless the people want it. We have to rebuild that trust. That's what this is about. This is a draft of a proposal, I'm sure it has a long way to go, I'm sure there's going to be all sorts of nitty-gritty details and challenges to implementing something like this, but at a broad level, this is what I sketched out, based on what I heard two weeks ago, and so I think I can be done presenting here, and I'll go sit back down and listen to what the rest of you have to say in reaction to this. And of course, as well, I'm sure you all came with your own ideas, and so this is not the only thing we have to discuss tonight, I don't expect that at all, but I hope that you all will consider something like this. Thanks.
Well, I just want to say that I'm very impressed with Commissioner Buckley's thoughtfulness and the effort that he put into this. I had some ideas that actually, I think, could be incorporated into this. I really appreciate looking for ways to involve the community earlier in the process, and I like this proposal, and how it works to create that synergy and that input earlier, because what we're finding, and what I've seen in the times that I've been paying attention and participating in these meetings, is that by the time the community is aware of something, the decision has already been made, and it's too late. And there's, and it's, and there's a lot of frustration, there's a lot of heartache, and I really liked what Commissioner Buckley said about rebuilding trust, really, to have those voices, have that input. I appreciated the looking for diverse, inclusive, more voices, bringing people to the table earlier on. I think it's very creative to try and look at the EDM menu, to try and do that. It's an existing structure, so it seems like it's easier than creating something brand-new, but I'm certainly open to other thoughts and ideas. In thinking about the proposal that Commissioner Buckley's put together, and the input that we've heard from the community, one of the things that really spoke to me was the nature, and the wildlife, and trees, and how can we protect these resources while also balancing with the fact that folks who own land have certain rights as well? And this seems to be one approach to be able to do that. So, for example, say there's some trees on a property, they could go through and... So for example, say there's some trees on a property, they could go through and maybe use this open option, and potentially that could earn them, the developer, a lot of points that could end up making what they're trying to do more economic or somehow advantageous to them. Is that, Commissioner Buckley, can I, is that just, yeah, okay. That's what you're thinking? Great.
Yes, exactly.
Great. Yep. I like that idea. I think the notification piece early on is really important. One of the things that I was thinking about is especially in these properties that do have trees and wildlife and birds and nature and plant species, that the city do some sort of assessment, and those ones in particular that the community be notified so that they can have input and maybe, you know, be discussing some of these option, open options, but also that there's opportunities because maybe some groups would like to purchase that land. People could, you know, and there might be some, you know, they could approach the developer early in the process and make the developer offers, nothing that is forced because, as, you know, they have rights, it's their land, but it creates an open, kind of like how mediation, you're required to go through mediation, but you're not required to have anything come through it. Like, you go through a step where they're required to have those discussions, but it's not necessarily, you know, it's at their election, if it makes sense, for the community early on. Another thing I was thinking of in bringing in those inclusive, diverse voices and bringing the community in would be if we had another citizens advisory group that could actually help do that and facilitate that with representatives from each ward as well, because I think we've seen that the word does get out eventually, and sometimes I've been here in meetings and I've seen every seat packed, right, about important topics that usually relate to preserving resources, to be honest, nature and various interests of the community, but it's often too late, or they don't have any say or voice in the process. And so, no, no, just two other thoughts to tag on to this that could work in synergy with it. And again, really appreciate the effort and the thoughtfulness and input in this. Thank you.
Commissioner Kettner.
Thank you. I do support this, you know, notion in general. However, this, a lot of the concerns that we've heard and the comments online, this wouldn't really address them. So I would support that in addition to some other things that I hope we would consider, where the input would be earlier, and that there would be some required oversight by a body rather than just a community meeting that, where the ideas are encouraged but not required. So I do, I do support it, but in addition to some other things that have a little more teeth into it, so may I?
Yep.
And Commissioner Kettner, are we going to do the same thing here?
Yes. That's what we talked about before. Yeah, I realized afterwards that I had made a lot of notes based on public comment. Thank you, public. So I need to see that. So I think the way to involve the public earliest is actually at the subdivision and plating part. We've, point, we've heard a lot from the community about land dedication. This is typically when land dedication is done, is at the time of subdivision and plating. It's currently out of line with our charter by taking away the difference between a major and minor subdivisions. We already have a process for them, and we would just follow the process that's already there for major subdivisions and have major subdivisions plating come to us. This would require a public hearing. I see one of the issues with this is, I believe it ends with the planning commission currently. I think it would be good to go to city council, again, just the trust level and where it is at this point. Number two, I found it very interesting, a couple of the public comments, one online and another one recently referred to, oh, I know what it was, it's actually in the strategic housing plan documents that were passed, referred to our public hearing process as being for 40 units or above 40 units. However, that's in what we passed as the Strategic Growth Initiative, renamed Arglo. And that is now set to sunset. And it's interesting to note that the three projects that were going to come for a public hearing, they pulled their public hearings because they were confident that that would be, that a public hearing requirement would be gone prior to their, getting their site plan and building permit approval. And that comment was also made online, that developers are very good at working around those requirements. So one way to do that would be, rather than to sunset it, would be to recommend keeping it with the public hearing part and just removing the allocations and the cap on allocations. One of our public commenters tonight actually mentioned in looking at the project, seeing the number of units in a project. And that is actually only there because currently they have to ask for allocations, otherwise those projects, many of them, wouldn't even be on that list. And then idea number three would be to require a planning commissioner, city council approval for certain site plans. Three units or more, request by three or more counselors. I made a note of this too below, we heard a lot of this, this seemed to be coming up, and I think it did tonight also. As far as at what point, and right now, there is no specific guidelines for the planning director, whoever that person is, there's no guidelines for them as to when they should send a project. So one of the easiest things that we could do, my hand, would be simply to provide guidance to the, and add into that section criteria under which the planning director must refer projects to the planning commission. And how do we build trust? Well, there are incredible amount of discretionary items. To say that there are use by right in these major site plans, there are not, there are a lot of gray areas, and when you're talking a large site plan, there are a lot of discretionary decisions. So thinking about projects that have discretionary decisions as perhaps needing a hearing could be one of the things. Reinstate density limits. A lot of what we've heard tonight, and one thing that I'm afraid wouldn't be taken care of with just taking the EDM, is density. And what is an appropriate density? And it's, I think everybody tends to agree that it's different in different parts of the city, and yet at the end of 2012, the zoning ordinance that was passed took that away. We used to have multifamily areas that were up to four units or up to 12 or up to 20, and now we don't have those limits, and it is one of those discretionary items. I wanted to throw on there the last one, amend land dedication. There's a whole ordinance that was sent to the planning commission and to city council by a group of, I think, five community members. I would like to assure the neighbors of 777 South Yarrow Street that their neighborhood is not the only one that's concerned about these things. Neighbors around Westland Mall area, former Sears area that have seen a sea of concrete only are incredibly concerned about the lack of green space in the projects. I also had, I have one more page. And the last thing I was wondering if we could do before our next meeting, but I would think most of us have already done this. I don't know if we want to do some kind of a matrix comparison, but, you know, what do other, what's kind of common? I found it really, I almost chuckled a couple of times when I was new on the commission, and we had an attorney and I think it was the, I think it was the planning director from Golden that said, gave us an example, "For example, when you're approving a site plan." "For example, when you're approving a site plan." But our planning commission, as we know, doesn't see site plans. So one thing that happens, I noticed, so I looked up some of the neighboring communities. This is really interesting. Once an application is complete and approved by staff, it'll be published. So notice of the decision will be sent to city council and planning commission review for a 21-day period during which time it can be called up for hearings. So that's, I thought was very interesting. They also have, didn't copy it, there is also a required public hearing in Golden for almost every project of three units or more. In Fort Collins, there's a neighborhood meeting, public hearing and approval by a planning and zoning board. Wheat Ridge seems to be the only place close by that I could find that it seems site plan is administrative, but I'm not 100% sure. And informational meetings, I think we've all talked about, the problem with informational meetings is, you know, people want to make sure that they're in early enough not to just be told this is what's going to happen, but to have some actual input if they haven't. So those were a few of the things that I was hoping that we could maybe put on our list to flesh out for the next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this has been an interesting conversation that's gone on, or rather, it's mostly presentations. And the biggest concern I've had, and this is something that was brought up last time, is that distinction between people being notified and really what the concern is, which is some level of control over projects. Because as we point out, the planning cases are out there to be seen, so some level of notification exists. And so that alone is not really what the concern is. Also, as we saw, and as we know, zoning is controlling a lot of what is the decision matrix, right? Within a major site plan's review and approval, whether or not it gets sent to us or it's done by the planning director at their discretion, still, it's dictated by the ordinance what are the articles that are used to decide whether it's approved or not. And so what we're asking for here is to, more than merely to notify people, but to change that system. And so the one thing I will note that I get concerned about is the arbitrariness of it. And so whatever we do, I would like to avoid it being arbitrary or potentially capricious, depending on changing taste, changing concerns, which is why I tend to like what Commissioner Buckley has put forward because of, one, it creates the potential, it creates the requirement for public engagement over a certain size. It creates the potential for a more cooperative approach to it. It avoids the changes to the basic system where we have zoning that is understood ahead of time, the rules are understood. We can also then, zoning itself can be changed. I think one of the things that I would recommend out of this, though it's not really the conversation we're having here, is to look at a change to zoning that is adjacent to parkland. I think that was obviously something everybody seems to be concerned with, is any of these properties that, but that, I realize this isn't the conversation here, but it seems...
It is.
Well, I guess what I mean to say, it's not the conversation because it's not directly related to changes to major site plan reviews. That said, I would highly recommend they consider an adjustment either to the existing zone or a change to zoning as it pertains to properties that directly about parkland. Obviously, that's a big concern, and legitimately so. So that said, I tend to, you know, favor what Commissioner Buckley is putting forward as a way to encourage, also create new requirements. Even within it, it has some challenges where how do you, how do you drive requirements for, for elements that the public are most concerned with? So there is things that need to be worked out so that can be achieved. But my biggest concern and the thing I want to avoid are making sure that there is a set of understood decision matrices, so that people know that when they are being reviewed, their projects, the development, it's not merely one set of people's concerns or another's, but it is a set of rules that they can abide by. And so, like I said, I tend to lean more towards this than to changes to the community engagement, though I do recommend we look at any ways we can encourage changes to the zoning such that you protect properties adjacent to parkland.
Did you have your light on again, or? Okay, Commissioner Kettner.
To your point about zoning, there are things that happened before zoning and that are very concerning, and plating and subdivision are the things, and land dedication. And the fact that the current practice is to allow the buyout of the required parkland dedication. So I think that, I would hope that this body would be willing to look at that. That is prior to zoning and currently, and nobody should have a right, I would think, to buy out of that requirement. And currently, it appears that that is sort of a right and a huge discretionary item much prior to zoning. And to your point about park, to help with the park thing, parks ended up with this underlying zoning, so when we look at it, we might want to look at if there's something we can add just to that park overlay that we have on all of the parks already. And possibly looking, getting rid of that underlying zoning might help. So that's just a suggestion for the park point that you brought up. And I wanted to make a point on historical preservation. You know, our historical preservation ordinance is quite slim, and I also wanted to assure the neighbors of 777 South Yarrow, I first heard of this as an issue down at the Schnell Farm in Ward Five, where we have some state or nationally protected structures, but unless we recognize them specifically in Lakewood, our Lakewood protections don't come into effect. So somewhere, that could be something to look at also. Thank you.
Commissioner Peters.
Thank you, Chair. I like a lot of the ideas I'm hearing, and certainly the parkland dedication is a very, very important one. I heard Commissioner Furman say wanting to avoid, you know, whimsical or decisions that are not predictable, and I think that's really important. And I think that ties in with Commissioner Kettner's number three, which was guidelines for the planning director when to send a project to the planning commission or to the city council for approval. I am aware that most cities do have more oversight and more public input, whether it's through the city council or the planning commission, and I think that's a piece that would definitely help. I mean, I think all of these ideas can be very synergistic and work together, and I'm interested to know what our next steps are.
Commissioner Furman.
And along those lines of having more oversight in other, having more oversight in other cities, yeah, I mean, I've done projects in a lot of other cities, and there is often other meetings. The key component will be how those bodies that are looking at it decide, and what I'm saying is it likely will end up having to be the same decision matrix, like, are they following the articles within the zoning code? So how that ends up is fine as long as it's clear, and we're not creating a situation where we simply have meetings that allow input with arbitrary decisions. So I think that's critical. Yeah, I just, the other thing is, while I don't necessarily disagree with you about the concern about the parkland dedication, just my understanding is that parks decides, and not the developer, whether or not it is parkland dedication versus fee and lieu. And having had the conversation a couple of times with parks, it's my understanding that they usually are deciding based on whether or not the parkland dedication is either A, going to end up being a pocket park that is difficult to maintain, and the cost of the additional maintenance, or if it fits in with their current plan. Obviously, I don't want to speak out of Obviously, I don't want to speak out of turn because it's not my world, but that's what I've heard them say. And so it seems like that one is still within the parks' purview. I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, having, having that be presented, but I don't know that I would change the decision matrix being such that parks decides only because they have a better purview of what their maintenance costs are and have a better understanding of when it makes sense for them. I will say, on the historic preservation side, it is a challenge, having done development also in lots of cities, a lot of cities do it that same way, where the city decides what is critical to them. In fact, most municipalities I've been in do it that same way, though it is occasionally a challenge for people who go into those cities to do the work. You have to figure out, something may be nationally registered, but it is not protected by the city, and as a result, you can demo with that any issues. So that's not unusual, but I understand the concern.
I'm going to take chair prerogative here, get back to Commissioner Kentner, but before we continue kind of back and forth, I wanted to make sure I raised up other ideas that had been presented to us. We certainly heard, and some of these, I think, maybe have been mentioned by others, but the notion that a major site plan would be a mandatory public or planning commission hearing if a certain number of city councilors requested it. We heard that notice would be more effective if it was, if it happened in the pre-planning process, and also if the radius for notice was much wider. I think we had one person who even suggested that notice on major projects should always be citywide. We heard a lot of comments about updating and improving the city's website, and I appreciate your reference, Commissioner Buckley, and your notes about, you know, a specially dedicated website, but I think there are a lot of folks that want to see a comprehensive, easy-to-search and sort site that's tied in with GIS and the various planning documents, and have that be a user-friendly experience for people tracking development. We heard that it might be useful, too, for people to be able to opt in to special notices. It might be community groups, it might be individuals. Maybe they can opt in and say, I want to hear about every project that's of a certain size or in a certain area, those sorts of things. Couple of different times, we've heard about this notion of an oversight committee for a development. We even had someone who wanted to see some sanctions for what they perceived of as developer misdeeds. We've certainly heard a lot of comments about projects of a certain size and type going to the planning commission automatically. I will tell you that one of the things that conceptually resonates with me, but it's hard to flesh out, is this notion of other triggers, right? It goes to planning commission if it's next to a cultural site, or it is of a certain size, or we even had someone, I think, who said, well, if it's going to be a controversial project, it should go. And, and those things are, there's a seed of logic in there that I'm having a little difficulty figuring out how to flesh out, but that was out there. We heard a suggestion that developers sign waivers, acknowledging that the rules applied to the project can change, and that they have no vested rights until it's finally approved. We've heard neighborhood associations say they want to have a required participation. We had a recommendation that instead of public meetings, that maybe we have a town hall-type format rather than a public hearing. I think, I know, we had a suggestion that if a project was over a certain number of units, I think 40 was suggested, that the developer, an additional review criteria would be that a developer would have to demonstrate that there's a market need, and the failure to do so would be a grounds for stopping the project. I thought an interesting idea was this notion of not project-specific, but quarterly, general development, public meetings where people can not, you know, focus on an individual project, but get information about development overhaul, overall. And I am probably forgetting something, but I just wanted to make sure that I raised up those other points that folks had put, been, had put out there. I do want to kind of just make sure that I understand the proposal on subdivisions and plats, because we do have a city charter that says subdivisions and plats go to the planning commission. We also have a city ordinance that the city council passed, which further defines that. As I understand it, they are relying on the state law for that ability, which is CRS 3123 227. So, and, and we can certainly dig into that a little bit more. I'm not saying we can't recommend, but just so we're clear, we would be recommending that the city council revise an ordinance they passed to send plats and subdivisions to the planning commission. And then the last thing I'd say on that, and then Commissioner Kentner, go to you, and this may be a question for Paul. As I've looked at our list of projects, I think it is important for us to think in terms of practicality, to some extent. At any particular moment, like right now, there's something like 25 subdivisions that are being considered by the department, like another 25 that are plats, and another 25 that are major site plans. So that's something that I will be thinking about in terms of whether it's realistic to have a planning commission, especially a volunteer, part-time planning commission, hold 75 public hearings. So I just throw that out as a consideration. Commissioner Kentner.
Yes, and the part of the law that you quoted is probably the part that says that, of course, a body can make rules to implement their charter. Is that what you were talking about?
No, it's more specific than that. It actually refers to the ability of a municipality, the city council, to delegate to whom they choose those provisions, even ones that are for the...
That have already been. So they've, so the public already delegated it through the charter, and then the city council took it and delegated it to staff, is sort of what you're saying? Okay. And so, yes, absolutely. And that was not, I just wanted to clarify, that was in a recent city council decision. So I just kind of wanted to clarify that. And to Mr. Furman's point, you know, a few weeks ago, Commissioner O'Neill mentioned how conversations happen early on in these projects, and absolutely, they do. And I believe the issue that, the frustration that we hear and we see, and that we see at 12th and Wadsworth especially, and why I lean towards, yes, they should all come to us, or we're going to end up with more situations like that, is where's the oversight? And there just is none right now. We have very one-sided conversations, and we have the developer having conversations with our staff who is, whose title is development assistance. And that's fine, and that's great, but we need to recognize that that is one side, and we need to involve the other side so we can come together in the middle and have the best project possible for our city. So that's what I believe, and why I would think that, and hope that we all support something that does have that oversight that's required, and not simply a one position, whoever that position is, having more than just one person making that decision. Thank you.
So, go ahead. Commissioner Buckley? You were reaching. So I would describe this as a wonderful bowl of spaghetti that we've thrown on the wall, and now our challenge will be to try to pick off the ones, maybe all of them, but the ones that we think we could make recommendations on. And my suggestion is that we move as fast as this commission would like to move. I am wondering if there are things that we could do sooner in terms of recommendations, and some things that will take longer because they're more complicated to be, to describe. So I am wondering if one recommendation, and I'm just curious what people think, would be that, and then I'm going to put a caveat on right after this. I wonder if one recommendation will be that the city of Lakewood Planning Department must have a website that initiates project information from the pre-planning discussion all the way through certificate of occupancy, that all the planning documents that get submitted have to be on there, that it is a searchable and sortable database, and it's tied into GIS. These are all ideas, not mine, better, smarter people than me have thrown those out, but have that technology piece be something that we could clearly recognize. Here's the caveat: it costs money, and it requires staff time, and it requires programming time, and it requires uploading and scanning document time. I would feel comfortable saying to the city council, this is such a priority that citizens have the earliest and most accurate information, that I think it should be funded, but I don't think we can ignore the fact that it is not without a cost. But I, and just in terms of one, and I'm pulling from a lot of different comments people had, but I think it addresses one of those things, which is, information is available from the very beginning, it is continuously available. I think it would be pretty easy to have the opt-in where people say, I want to hear about every residential project over 10 units, or I want to hear about every project in this ward or that ward. So that's one idea, not to suggest that it stands in the place of any other. And I'd just be curious what comments folks have, and I'm not sure who put their light on first. Maybe Commissioner Peters.
Yeah, I had some procedural questions. I like the idea of the website, and I would support that. Are we looking to put together some ideas tonight, or are we looking to do this over a couple meetings? And I guess my question and comment relates to being able to hear input from maybe on Lakewood Speaks, folks who are listening, who are here in person or online. I guess I just want to make sure we're not just limiting this to whatever we flush out tonight, because this is a very broad assortment of ideas and thoughts, and I feel like we could stay here very late to do that, and I don't want to stay here very late. And I want to have an opportunity for public input.
Sure. Well, again, as you know, that's not in my control. That is this commission's control. So whatever the majority wants to do, will do. My suggestion was that we deal with these recommendations the same way we did with the previous three, which is, once we get some firm ideas, we convert that to paper. That paper goes on Lakewood Speaks so everyone can see it. We hold public comment on those ideas, and then, following that, we can discuss. And it moves as fast or as slow, as specific or as general as this commission wants it to.
Okay, and I am interested in hearing public input on all of the ideas. Like, I would, I would like to see Commissioner Kentner's ideas on, on paper. It was very helpful to see Commissioner Buckley's ideas, and have an opportunity for folks to comment on everything. You did a great job of collecting comments and input from the online submissions, and appreciated that, but I think some people submitted their ideas, maybe, you know, would like to provide further input on others. I mean, can we collect all of the ideas as a first step, and then have comment, and then kind of work through all of those ideas?
That is up to the commission.
Okay.
In terms of process, yeah.
Well, I'll hear from my fellow commissioners on that.
Commissioner Buckley?
I'll go in order of I heard things. Yes, for like, short-term, low-hanging fruit, things we can maybe dispatch in a resolution to council the most quickly, I support your idea of the website. I am in agreeance with you both that it's a good idea, and that it is something that really needs to be in city council's court to finalize, since there's obviously a budgetary component to it that's outside this commission's purview. Yeah, also, I guess a lot of the same process questions as Commissioner Peters. I'd be amenable to her idea of literally taking the list of ideas you heard. You've documented them quite thoroughly, combined with Commissioner Kentner's list and mine, and maybe we go through that at the next meeting and just identify items to go through in order and dispatch them. I will say, even while supporting that, that every single one of those ideas that you just read out in seven minutes ago, Chair, I personally don't support. I think I support the, the overall desire behind it for a more, you know, engaged public process. I think there are specific pitfalls with maybe some of the very specific proposals, and so I would certainly not, like, vote turn by turn and support every one of those, but I would support a process where we go by, go through everything that was suggested, and, you know, I find out what the other six people vote on, how they vote. That's just an orderly way to get through it, and get to a point where we know what we're drafting on paper for a resolution that ultimately goes to council. And I think I'd be supportive process-wise, too, of maybe we send back multiple resolutions to council, right? There might be some things, like your website idea, that's so obvious and has so much consensus on this commission that we can do that quickly, and some of the other things, maybe even including the own idea that I presented tonight, I have full awareness that that's going to be tricky to draft, and will take longer.
Commissioner Kentner.
Yeah, I thought that I would support what Commissioner Peters said, what you're all saying. I think that's sort of what we told the public last time, was that we would have things on Lakewood Speaks that they could see before we would make any decisions. So I think, thinking of the timing of our next meeting, Chair, would you be looking for, like, by this coming Monday or Tuesday, we would have to have things submitted to you to get it up there, or do you have something in mind for timing?
Well, so I need a little more guidance, because I don't know that it makes sense for every individual commissioner to be putting something out on Lakewood Speaks. It should be the commission seeking comment. So if, if we don't want to grapple with these issues conceptually early on, then I think we need to be working on what that list is. It's not, my thought is not that everybody gets to put their own list out there. There should be some sense that this is a commission-supported idea to explore. Commissioner Peters?
Yeah, I was thinking that maybe Paul could collect everything and, into one location, and before it gets published to Lakewood Speaks, then everybody could review, but we're not interacting with each other, we're interacting with Paul and putting that list together. And for me, I mean, I had a few ideas, but they work very synergistically with other commissioner ideas, and I want to make sure that I'm looking at all of the public input and that that's all captured, and then I do want to see more information on Commissioner Kentner's ideas.
Yeah, and, and I know that it's, that it's, it's much easier to work just amongst ourselves behind the scenes. I just, I just don't think that serves the interest. I really think it's important that we not formulate and review lists and sign off on things and draft things without it going...
I just want to, yeah, I want to be clear, that's not what I'm suggesting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said it'd be circulated, we would comment on it, and...
Yeah, let me be clear. So, everybody sends it to Paul or another staff member who collects a list, and then it gets sent out to make sure that it's complete. So everybody reviews it for completeness, and they send one thing back. This is not back and forth between any commissioners, it's just a very straightforward way to collect the list. So there's one review, everybody sends their things in, puts it together, everybody takes a look, is it complete, and then sends it back.
Makes me uncomfortable, but I understand. Commissioner Kentner?
Yeah, no, thank you for the clarification. That's what, yeah, I just want to clarify that I think Commissioner Peters just meant that we would send things to Mr. Race, that he would compile into a list that would be on Lakewood Speaks, not that we would... Not that we would discuss that or send that back and forth.
It's a list that we are seeing, that the public is not seeing, and we may decide, I want to scratch this one off, or I want to add that one, and then it goes to the public.
No, that's not, that's absolutely not at all what I'm suggesting.
I need to hear better than what you're suggesting.
Definitely not. This is just to create a list of everything, and make sure everything is on it. That's all, just to have one...
And that's shared with all the commissioners, before the public sees it?
The only purpose is to make sure that it is complete. It is not about taking anything off.
Could a commissioner take something off or add something?
No, no, it's just to make sure that everything that has been discussed, or been submitted, at least is complete. I mean, that's, you know, and it's okay, we don't have to do that step. We can skip that step, and if it's not complete, then we have an opportunity in the beginning, perhaps. But I just want to make sure it's complete for the public to see. It's a complete list, there is no back and forth. It's just about compiling a list that includes, it's all-inclusive. There's no discussion on merits or demerits, it's just collecting a list.
Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think, to emphasize my understanding of what is being said, if each individual commissioner, just by themselves, with no other communication to anyone else, is just sending a list of bullet points to Mr. Rice, and he's compiling those with no edits or editorial judgment, he's just making a list of all seven of us and distributing it back to Lakewood Speaks, and that's where the seven of us see it, then I think that's a process for developing a list that we can work through that, like, doesn't run afoul of any of our, like, open meeting processes, which I think is your concern. However, that being said, I think we have tried that before, and it didn't feel like the best process, to me, just from the perspective that I think not every commissioner did end up sending something in, and so it was still kind of incomplete, and we were still kind of adding to the list in the future. So I think we could do that process if we wanted to, and it would be kosher for our open meetings processes. But it might be better just to make motions here in a meeting of specific agenda items that we want on the list for future meetings. And if we all vote for them here, that's very out in the public, and, well, everyone knows how it got agended. So that would be my opinion.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Thank you, Chair. And I think what Commissioner Buckley just stated on us openly discussing it at these meetings is probably the most transparent way to move forward, although I do understand Commissioner Peters' desire to create a comprehensive list that we've all thought through. I think it starts to perpetuate, it continues to perpetuate the mistrust that there is side conversations, back conversations, something being hidden. That is exactly what we're trying to avoid in doing this. I also think, based on another comment that Commissioner Buckley made earlier, in that there were, of the list of ideas from previous meetings and previous public comment, that there were a large majority of those that he would not support. I think the, it's my understanding, and I'm definitely open to opinions of everyone and the public. I think our job here is to vet the ideas that are actionable, and legal, and measurable to share with council. So to create, you know, a very long list of items that have been included in public comment, maybe are things that we've come up with on our own, and worked off of other documents, and thank you, Commissioner Buckley, for creating this very comprehensive draft. I think that also sort of perpetuates the conversation that is frustrating for the public, that there's all of this time and effort being put into suggestions that we can't implement, that aren't, and not all of them, there's some great ideas. There's been great ideas mentioned here this evening. I just mean, there are, my concern even with this draft is, you know, incorporating design suggestions from the community. Some suggestions by the community, a lot of suggestions by the community, won't be able to be implemented. They will cause a hardship to the development, to what is supposed to be an asset to the city. It won't be, it won't become that. So, and not always, I'm not trying to blanket statement or throw cold water on great ideas. I just think that it's, the reason that our process is not great is because it's difficult to fix. And there are other municipalities, Commissioner Kettner shared Goldens, where they are more successful, they are creating a document that everyone can see with all of the developments listed. They are retroactively, or daylighting their SGI with very little pushback from community. Community's pretty accepting of what's happening there. And that is due to, I think, community dialogue, transparency, and the respect of community to have those conversations, and have the dialogue to explain why certain ideas cannot be implemented, when they can't be implemented, instead of just silence, and then moving right along with the development. And I think that is a large piece that's missing. So, those are all the thoughts that I've been having as I've been sitting here this evening. Thank you.
Commissioner Peters, did you still have your light on, or again?
It was actually left over, but I would just comment in that I think that would be our process, as we go through everything, we would be able to discuss, and then we would have a comprehensive list, and we could discuss, okay, this one we can implement, this can go in a shorter term. I just feel like there's so much material here, that it would be nice to not sift through all of it now, but to be able to take that fresh, I mean, because we're already two hours into this meeting. And so, that's where my thinking is on that. But I agree that having that dialogue and going through each one is an important process.
Commissioner Furman?
I have to say that the desire to do this list route is one that is really, it's a very attractive desire, because if it is exactly as you're, I'm assuming you're thinking, I can't help but think it as well, which is, there will be a whole list of ideas. I would like time to be able to get them out, but I would like to get them out before we meet again, so everybody can see them. However, the concern, I think, and I, again, I don't want to make assumptions, but Commissioner O'Neill, and Buckley, and Chair Kolkmaier, maybe thinking about is one of the ones that I keep thinking about. And this goes back to my comment about community awareness versus actual engagement, which is, I get concerned about how we avoid the arbitrariness. And why I mention this, I'm going to come up with a totally nonsense example in my mind. But if you had a group of community members near, I'm not even saying we have a sandy park, but you can imagine a lake park we have that has a, it's near a community, it's got a lot of sand. You get a very active group of three or four neighbors that really want to see nothing but South Beach Miami-style housing, and they're going to show up, and they are going to be adamant that anything built in that neighborhood needs to look like South Beach, even though aspects of it may not be building code, and aspects of it don't really fit within what the rest of the city wants. I guess what I'm getting at is, there is, there's a reason that we have a understood, holistic set of rules and understanding. I am all for more notification, I'm all for making changes that people are involved in, and changes to zoning, and encouraging public engagement. But the piece I don't want to do is create that sense that people are going to have lots of ways of affecting projects that they might not do to those kinds of things. And that's where I want to make sure that we can have the conversations here about various ideas. And again, I'm not suggesting either of you or anyone saying this list was about to suggest South Beach pop architecture as a, but my point being is, I can see where a list could create false expectations, because we haven't talked it through and seen the potential problems, where it is creating expectation in the public's mind that's not achievable, due to any number of reasons. And so I see a need and validity to discuss it before it gets put out as something from the body, as though it is more than merely something we want to discuss. So I see the challenges, but I do, I mean, I get the need to, whether it means we have another meeting on this subject, not that we want to belabor it, so that we have time to come up with ideas, bring them back and discuss it, whatever that is. I guess I see the reason to have the discussion before it gets put out, and has the appearance of being something we've thought through as a body. Anyway, so that is my concern.
Commissioner Kettner?
Well, now you got me thinking. Because I was ready to make a motion, but it was going to include all of these. Yeah, I was, but you know, you made a decent point there, Commissioner Furman. You know, I think the other reason is, just so that the public also has some things to consider, so we can hear back earlier. Well, I'll make the motion, and we'll see if there's a second. I was going to make a motion that the next Planning Commission meeting agenda include that the Planning Committee, in response to the request made by Counselor Stewart, the Planning Commission will be discussing topics including, but not limited to, public engagement within the EDM, changes to the city's planning department website, subdivision and plating ordinance, amending 14.27, requiring Planning Commission or City Council approval for certain site plans, removing discretionary powers from staff to make them transparent and accountable, reinstating density limits, amending land dedication ordinance, and park overlay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Commissioner Buckley?
Commissioner Kettner, can you restate that whole list again?
I think so.
I didn't catch everything, I was trying to take notes.
And I hope I also said that we may be discussing, including, but not limited to, because that's a lot of items to discuss, okay? Public engagement within the EDM, enhanced development menu, changes to the city's website in regards to development projects, subdivision and plating ordinance, amending 14.27, requiring Planning Commission or City Council approval for certain site plans. Keep going. Removing discretionary powers from staff, reinstating density limits, amending the land dedication ordinance, park zoning overlay. And I think I forgot one thing, but I don't know what it is now.
Okay, I got about half of those the first time, and the second time, I think I got the other half, and the first half's still checked out, so, thank you.
There are a number of things in there that I would like to suggest. I just am not prepared to say that all of those items should be on the table. Some of them, I know, cannot be done. Some of them, I know, should not be done. And therefore, I think it's really misleading to the public that we're going to talk about all of those things, when the thing that's been agendoned for us was a very specific request from City Council. Come up with proactive community engagement in the pre-planning process and park overlay. And I would like to discuss the merits of proposals like that, and have the commission really dig in on those things. I can't support a motion that would put all of those things on the table that I think are beyond the purview, but that's just me. Commissioner Buckley?
Okay, yeah, I'll, I agree with much of what you just said, so I'm going to make a motion to pare this list down a little bit. Before I make that motion, I actually want to ask a question to Mr. Rice. I understand, sir, that the City Council has an upcoming agenda item to talk about park land dedication ordinance. Is that correct?
That is correct, and you're going to put me on the spot for...
It's April 15.
April 15.
Thank you, Commissioner Kettner. Yeah, so, this is quite a long list that Commissioner Kettner provided, so the park land dedication ordinance is important, and I'll even go so far as to say that I think it's not perfect, and it should be looked at. But if City Council's already doing that, and they haven't specifically delegated that to us, and we've got quite a lot of other ideas, I'll first move by, yeah, my first motion will be to strike that particular item from the list that Commissioner Kettner offered.
Is there a second to strike that from the list? Commissioner Furman?
Second. May I ask point of clarification, just so I understand what's going on? So Commissioner Kettner made a motion, Peters seconded, and we're having another one before we vote on that?
Well, so...
Amendment.
It's a motion to amend.
Okay, I missed the amend, so I just wanted to clarify.
Commissioner Buckley is suggesting that that list should remove, or be removed from that list, the park land dedication?
I just needed that one word, thank you.
Is there a second? Commissioner Furman?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on that motion? Commissioner Peters?
Just want to make sure I understand the reasoning behind it, is that because it's already going to be discussed by City Council, but would we potentially have anything to add? Or are we thinking that timing is different? Or we would cover the same things? Just trying to understand a little bit more.
Commissioner Buckley, do you want to answer that question?
Yeah, my understanding was that there's going to be a study session, apparently on April 15, by City Council about that ordinance, and that they've already scheduled, I think, a time maybe out in June, I heard, for first and second reading of revisions to that ordinance. So it seems like the council already has their own process. And I guess this body does have authority to make land use recommendations, broadly speaking, and parks are part of that, but it seems like there's another process going forward that is independent of us, and we have quite enough to do. So that's why I would offer that we take it off our list.
If there's no further discussion on that, I'll ask commissioners to vote. If you vote yes, that particular item will be removed from the list of the underlying motion. And that passes four to two. I mean, oops, sorry, I didn't display. I can, let's do it again so it can be displayed. I apologize. Display votes, there we are. So that passes. Now we have the main motion that Commissioner Kettner made. Commissioner Furman?
I had a question, which is maybe not fair to ask now, since it's part of the point of what you're asking about, but I'm going to ask it anyway, and I guess feel free to say you want to discuss it later. But your concerns with the subdivision ordinance, and how it impacts this conversation we're having with major site plan review, I'm not saying it doesn't, I'm just not totally clear on how, and so if in a sort of simple way you can tell me how the, sorry, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. If you tell me in a simple way how the subdivision ordinance will impact the major site plan review.
Commissioner, hang on. Commissioner Kettner?
Thank you. Because land dedication is done at the time of subdivision and plating.
So you're talking about the park land dedication, or school, okay.
Well, school dedication also, actually, if, now that you, I mean, yeah. A lot of decisions are made there, and that's early. That's even earlier than the site plan. And I believe the request was specifically about getting, you know, community engagement early on, when there is a true input, where it's, you know, before those times where there could be a use by right. So that's the point. I did actually have my light on for something today. I did actually have my light on for something different.
Go ahead, Commissioner Kettner.
Shall I continue? I would like to add to the list. This is actually the thing that I thought you all were going to bring up, because I think that most of you would be in favor of this, and that is adding criteria for the planning director to refer major site plans to the Planning Commission.
So you're making a motion to amend your motion to add?
I'm making a motion to amend my motion to add to the list criteria for the planning director to submit major site plans review to the Planning Commission.
Is there a second?
Sure, second.
It's been moved and seconded at discussion. I'm going to vote no, because I think this is going to result in a process that does not allow us to move forward and give people what they're looking for. I think this laundry list is so long and so complicated and raises so many legal issues, I don't know how we're going to ever come up with recommendations. I would really think that if we want to quickly get recommendations so that the next project that people are concerned about, that we require a public hearing, or require community meetings, or require additional notification. That's what people are asking for, and this list is one that I'm not going to be prepared to grapple with next meeting. It goes to issues that are decades old, decades old. It is a fundamental, it's issues that fundamentally change our zoning ordinance, and for us to grapple with that, to take that approach, I think denies people a quick way for us to suggest changes that will give them meaningful participation. So I will vote no on this, and I'm going to vote no on the laundry list after that. Any other comments? Commissioner Buckley?
I'm just curious what the Chair's opinion is on the best way to proceed. I heard you express, this evening, expressed your own discomfort with us sending a list of ideas to discuss to Paul, who would then recirculate them to the public and to us. I'm hearing you express discomfort with this method. So what is the method for coming up with the process of how we're moving forward with something?
I thought we were going to use the same process we've used for the last three recommendations, where we take public comment, we grapple with it, we put something out that is based upon our discussion, no one has voted for it or against it, but then we discuss it, amend it, and the public gets to see the actual thing we're talking about. That's what I thought our process was going to be. This really strikes me as kind of a swing for the fences. It raises a lot of issues that have been out there for a long time, and I'm afraid it will have the effect of preventing us from coming up with consensus recommendations. So that is my concern. Commissioner Peters?
Yeah, I do disagree. I think that there's going to be some topics that will be shorter term, there'll be some that are longer term, and I think as we get into those discussions, we will be able to determine that. I think that, you know, I'm an engineer, that's my background, and I like having things very clear, I like looking at things, I like approaching it very methodical, you know, in a manner that has, you know, we're looking at things objectively, and we can make that decision, okay? This is maybe going to take longer, and this is the reason why, or this is not. I think having some clear criteria is very valuable, and I don't think it's very difficult, I don't think it's complicated, and I think it's worth discussing.
Commissioner Kettner?
Thank you, Chair. I think that, in my view, I was actually seeing this as very similar, last, either last time or two times ago, we did send a list to City Council. So I saw this as sort of a big bucket list, and hopefully, next time, we would be able to whittle it down and send a whole bunch, a few of these to the City Council. So I thought it was very similar to what we had done in the past in that sense. So I'm comfortable with it, I suppose, in that way. That helps.
So we have a motion to amend the main motion by adding yet another item on, and Commissioner Furman?
The one thing, while I did second it, the one thing I will point out is the item on that list about planning discretion is very close to this new item. There is some distinct overlap in those two items, I'll just note that.
Commissioner Buckley?
Commissioner Furman just made the same point I was going to make. Yeah, we already have an item on the list about removing discretionary authority from staff, which I think is very similar to what the criteria are for referring something to the Planning Commission as a site plan. We also have something I wrote down, I wrote down criteria for requiring Planning Commission approval of site plans. Maybe that could be construed to be pretty different than, or something slightly different than the criteria for telling the planning director to refer something to the Planning Commission, but I interpreted it, what I wrote down, to mean the same thing. I think we're getting a little bit redundant, and the list is already long, so I'll be voting no for that reason.
Okay, for that reason, as long as it fits, oh.
Do you want to be recognized, Commissioner Kettner? Commissioner Kettner?
I apologize, and for that reason, I will withdraw my motion if the second would withdraw their second.
She's asking you, Commissioner Furman, to withdraw your second if you want?
Yes, I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. Further discussion on the main motion. Commissioner Buckley?
Yeah, I want to make a motion to further pare down this list. I will, I will move that we strike the items for density limits and talking about those. That's been something that's come up before. You know, cities have different ways of regulating density. Some put a number, a cap on units per acre, some use floor area ratio. We don't use either of those systems. We already do have density limits, we just don't call them that. We have building heights, we have setback requirements, we have open space requirements. Those all have a functional limit of imposing density. And so I think it just adds redundancy to the code that makes it more difficult to comprehend what the code actually allows, and so just kind of as a general idea, I won't support adding explicit density limits to the zoning ordinance, I think, ever, and that's not really something that I've heard in maybe more than maybe one public comment. It's not the bulk of what we're being asked to do, so I just don't think it's appropriate for us to spend our time on it or to be on this list. So therefore, I move to strike it.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded at discussion on that amendment. Commissioner Furman?
So I'm going over the list, I'm trying to, and what I'm thinking about is circling back to trying to capture community engagement that is going to be fruitful, that is about the review process. And so I, whether or not I agree or disagree with density limits, and whether or not I agree or disagree about the, there was also one about 14.27 and the allocation. You know, withholding any kind of comment on them, I think both of them are a little bit aside, as is the plating one as it relates to the land dedication. I guess I'm inclined to remove them only because of, this is, if our goal is to find a way for the community engagement to be fruitful, wow, we may want to make some of these changes. It's a bit like the park land dedication. What is going to be our most efficient way? I guess this goes a little bit to what Chair was talking about. What is going to be the fastest and most efficient way to get to some changes? Yeah, I'm inclined to agree in removing any of these that might be a distraction from the initial purpose of this one. I think they can be potentially topics in other meetings, but as we're trying to grapple with this major site plan review or methods to encourage community engagement that can bring about changes, I'm not sure that they are as relevant outside of potentially being triggers. I know that that's one that you're not necessarily in agreement with, but that said, that's the only way I see them having relevancy to this particular issue at the moment.
Commissioner Peters? Oh.
Can I ask just for a point of order?
If Commissioner Peters did not want a light on, go ahead, Commissioner Kettner.
What were the two, was it the?
Well, I was, I mean, I was just going with the ones he was talking about initially, which is the density. But the point I was making was the, you had one about 14.27, the allocations piece. I can't remember exactly what the one was, but I just know in my head that that was also going to be slightly aside of community engagement unless it were part of a list triggering some other reviews. But yeah, so it was, I was mostly agreeing with his move, so.
Commissioner Buckley?
I was wondering if Commissioner Furman wanted to make a friendly amendment to my motion to strike additional things. I'd be open to that, if you want to take a shot at it.
I'm going to make an observation, if that's all right.
Sure.
And certainly, you can invite that motion. Isn't it clear to us as a Commission that this process is not a great one, where we say there's 30 things out there that we think should be changed, except that we're not voting on those 30 things? We're just creating this list, and then we're going to have to individually go through. Why does it not make more sense for us to give some thought? We've had public comment on all these issues. The public knows every single one of these things that we listed today, because it was done in a public hearing. Why wouldn't we do the hard work and say, I'm prepared to support this recommendation to City Council to change the process so that the community gets more engagement? This notion of we're going to relitigate a lot of these issues from the past is going to prevent us from being able to help people, and that's what I'm uncomfortable with. Commissioner Peters?
Yeah, I'd like to answer that. I think that, I think the public deserves to know why we're not discussing a topic, and I would have preferred to go through all of the list and to have addressed that instead of they've submitted something and then they don't know why it's being discussed. And so we're doing this a little bit right now. So for example, I've heard all of the discussion on the density, and I'm prepared to remove that. Like, I would not, I'd rather not do an amendment, because I'd like to take them individually, and I've heard this, and it makes sense to me, so I will vote to remove that. The other ones, some of the others, the previous one, I didn't agree with. I think there's value in, but it's the will of the Commission, so, and I think that, I think for transparency and building trust, I think it's critical to do this, absolutely. Thank you.
I believe we, if there's no further discussion, the motion is that we agenda for the next meeting, the list which I hope Mr. Rice has captured. If you feel confident, do we want that?
Right, point of order, I think we have an amendment to the list to vote on right now.
Yeah, correct. We're, the motion on the table is to amend the list that Commissioner Kettner proposed by striking the item about density limits from future discussion.
My apologies, I did not think we had gotten to a second on that, but who seconds that motion?
Commissioner Furman.
Commissioner Furman did. All right, well then, we will vote on whether or not that one item should be removed from the list. And that passes five to one. We are back to the main motion. Any further discussion? Commissioner Buckley?
I move to also remove from this list the discussion of the subdivision and plating ordinance and any discussions about 14.27. And my reason for making this motion was basically what Commissioner Furman said before.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded at discussion. Commissioner Kettner?
Yes, I would strongly request that my fellow commissioners remove this amendment because those are the two places where there currently is a public process. These are probably the two easiest places to engage the public. We already have a process for major subdivisions. So simply by making sure that it is properly done, there's already the process there. It's one of the easiest ones, and it's one of the ones earliest in the process. Amending 14.27 also would be one of the easiest ones, because it already has a process for public hearings. Those are the two on the list. I think they're the only two on the list that currently already have processes for public hearing. They're just not, you know, they, we found ways and exemptions on all of them to keep the public hearings from happening. Thank you.
Commissioner Furman?
You'll have to correct me if my understanding is incorrect. Is my understanding both the preliminary plat and final plat process do go to the Commission? So is the change, I mean, are you saying they don't go to the Commission? Because my understanding that the...
Major and minor subdivision?
Yeah, the major, the preliminary plat and final plat for a major subdivision?
Correct, but not for minor subdivisions. And basically, nothing qualifies as major subdivisions, so we would probably be looking at the qualifications of major and minor subdivisions. Are we qualifying enough and qualifying them in the right way? Or is that part of the problem, that we're not engaging the public early enough because it's a problem with defining major and minor subdivisions? So that was the reason.
Commissioner Peters?
I had some questions that were largely answered in that response. I don't recall seeing anything coming in front of me. Can you, can you speak about, in the history, any recent, the recent ones that we've seen for major?
Commissioner Kettner?
Aren't you impressed I waited to be recognized? Oh, I think that I can only think of one, I think, in the four years. I think you were on the Commission at the time. The major subdivision, I think Mr. Rice did the, the single-family home development that's now going to be all rental in Ward Four, did that qualify as a major subdivision? It was either that one or the one adjacent to the tree farm. Mr. Rice, do you know?
There's the...
And maybe it was two.
And renting altogether, there's the church property that was subdivided.
Yes, that's...
Yep, and then...
And that was, I believe, a major subdivision. That was either right before or right after we were on Commission.
Right, and then the other one, I can't remember, in Green Mountain, I can't remember if it was just rezoning, or it was rezoning and plat that went together to the Commission. Those are the two that I recall recently.
I do remember the rezoning. So the purpose, the intent of this is that the classification of major and minor is such that there are significant decisions that are not going before, because I heard the argument on the other side, if everything goes, we're going to hear 85 cases, but it sounds like maybe there's something in the middle that would make more sense. Is that?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, and I believe somebody from the Two Creeks neighborhood online mentioned this in their online comments as well.
Okay, so this makes a lot of sense to me, and I'll not be supporting removing this. I think this is, it's in line with the public process and community engagement and earlier in the process, so I think it's certainly within scope. I think it's simple, and I think it could be a low-hanging fruit. simple, and I think it could be a low-hanging fruit.
Commissioner Furman, did you have your...
I'm sorry.
Okay. I would simply say that I, my impression from understanding this issue is that it's the highest hanging fruit because it involves the state statute that authorizes the city council to pass a lawful ordinance, and then we, as the planning commission, would be telling them that they have not passed a lawful ordinance and they need to change the way they've done subdivisions. That is a very significant, very lengthy conversation that I think we would need to have. There is public process in those, as has been noted by several commissioners. Major site plans were what we were asked to make recommendations on because there isn't public engagement. So to ignore that distinction, I think is a mistake. I think what people, what the council asked us to do was to get more engagement on major site plans. And all of these other issues, which I understand are longstanding concerns, but I think it will result in us not coming up with actual actionable recommendations. That's my concern. And, and that doesn't, that hasn't changed. Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you. Again, once again, I was going to make a point that you just made. The request from City Council to us was talking about site plans. Subdivisions are something different. You know, no one is upset about 777 South Yarrow Street because of something to do with our subdivision process. They're upset about it for other reasons, and maybe they relate to site plans better. That's what we've been tasked to talk about, so that's why I would support striking that. And then this motion would also strike the topic about amending Chapter 14.27. I would support striking that from the list of something we talked about. I'll try to say this respectfully. Like it or not, the city council voted to sunset it. It's going away. And I recognize that there are some people, particularly Commissioner Kettner, who I understand very much does not like that 14.27 is going away. And I respect that, but it is. That's just a reality. I don't want to spin our wheels talking about it. And so I'll be voting to strike it from the list.
Commissioner Furman.
I don't know if this is a comment on me, but I go round and round on this. I get, I get the argument to discuss the minor versus major subdivision, the 10 units or less than 10 units in the, in the concept. As I think about it, though, I feel like if we separate it from the concerns about land dedication, which I think we've sort of determined that is a valid topic, but one that maybe we have to discuss after City Council, or maybe it will all be dealt with there. So if we separate it from land dedication, then the use of the minor subdivision change feels like an end around to get to the thing that I think we all agree we want, right? And so I don't disagree with what you're trying to achieve. I feel like perhaps we want a more direct approach, so I think I, I think I do support removing that as well. Not because I, not necessarily because I disagree with it, but I feel like it's a backwards way of getting to where we're trying to go. But again, that's if you separate the land dedication piece from it, but...
Commissioner Kettner.
Well, backwards or proactive, I guess, you know, earlier in the process. I don't know if you would be interested in the motion maker in separating these two. I do see them as very different. And I'm really going to bat on the subdivision plating one as the one that, to me, is very important because it does very highly impact the site plan that comes of it. And Chair, I don't think, we are asking, we are making recommendations, absolutely, to City Council to change ordinances. That's what all these do. Commissioner Buckley's proposal today would change an ordinance that City Council passed. So I don't quite understand your concern in that part of your concern. Perhaps the rest of it I do, but all of these are changes to ordinances that City Council has, in the past, have validly passed. That's what they've asked us to suggest changes to.
Yeah, and I apologize if I wasn't clear. It is not that we are suggesting changes to ordinances. It's that we'd be suggesting discussing issues that are unrelated to the recommendations, in my view, and maybe it's only my view. And secondly, super controversial things, right? Article 14, I mean, these are really controversial things, you know? Bringing back density limits, really controversial things. Subdivisions and plats, all coming to the subdivision or coming to the planning commission, really controversial things. And I am being 100% transparent on this. I think that's going to prevent us. It's a bad strategy because every one of those things on that list, with the exception of what we were specifically asked to do, is going to be a quagmire. And I understand the desire to litigate those issues and relitigate those issues. They're just not the issues that we've been asked to make recommendations on. Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Chair. I think, I'm, I have a hard time with this list because I do see the importance that Commissioner Kettner is bringing up, and I would love to dive into them and litigate them and talk about them and take public comment and keep, and keep digging into them. But I do agree that I think it, it prevents actionable items in a timely manner so that we don't have another 777 Yarrow. We have some process in place that can be quickly enacted. And these topics, because of all of the reasons that, everyone knows these reasons, Commissioner Kettner knows these reasons, are controversial. They are very deep topics, and they are decades old. So I think that they're worthy of discussion, and I'm very interested in every one of them, but I don't think they get us to the end result, which is answering Councilwoman Stewart's request to come up with something that engages folks at an earlier time. So, yeah, that's just my opinion on that.
Commissioner Peters.
So I think we talked through the, the plating that I don't think I support removing it. I think folks know that. On the other one, the 14, just to be clear, you're not interested in bringing back any of the provisions that have to sunset, just the provision for public input at 40 units. So this is a very narrow scope. It's not, anyways, and it does provide an opportunity for public input. I saw you nod your head. Can you confirm that that's correct?
Commissioner Kettner.
Yes, as the public comment stated, and it is in our strategic housing plan that was just adopted. It is the only place currently where we supposedly have public engagement in major site plans, is in that ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. I, I think these are current and relevant topics, and I will be voting against removing them.
So I guess I will just make another observation. Instead of talking about proactive things, we've already been dragged into this discussion on all of these other issues. And I understand that some commissioners feel that those are directly relevant. This is a indication of how this would go if we follow this path, as opposed to focusing on actual specific changes that could be back to City Council quickly. So I actually wonder if a better practice, I will return to what I thought we had all agreed to, which was that we were going to treat this the same way we treated the previous recommendations. And I, I would suggest maybe, you know, I, I would suggest removing the motion on that, and let's just do a vote on the entire list rather than trying to do it piecemeal. I would be more comfortable with that, and it seems that that's the desire, is to get a vote on the larger list rather than taking one more off or one more off. I would like to start at the other end and say, "What about A, B, C? Let's get these recommendations to City Council to protect the public from being startled by another project rather than relitigating all these other issues." I would appreciate it if the amendment were taken off and we just vote on the underlying motion. Commissioner Kettner.
So one of these last things that we did, you had put out a list before the meeting when we made recommendations to City Council, and you had compiled that list as the chair.
Yeah, that's correct.
So do you plan to do that based on everything that you heard, so we don't have to have this motion? Because you will be providing an encompassing list for the next time that will be up there for everybody to see?
Yeah. In my view, we're not there yet. I don't think that consensus has been built on the list that, that you're suggesting. So I don't think we're ready for that, which is unfortunate, because I had hoped that tonight we would be able to actually get some work done, and it's looking like we don't have that sort of consensus because we have, the universe has been expanded so large that I don't think, I know I couldn't produce a list that would be worthy of us putting out for the public at this point, because I do not think that we have that sort of consensus here.
So I guess I'm confused then. So what, what would you like us to try to accomplish tonight? Just to think about it and come up with a list next time? Is that what you were suggesting?
If commissioners are not ready, if you're not ready to make suggestions based upon your knowledge and the public comments, that's fine. But, and if you want to wait till the next meeting to do that, that is fine. We have spent a lot of time tonight when we could have been talking about substantive issues and proposals. We're spending it talking about SGI, density limits, subdivisions and plats. And I just would have preferred this to have been a working session, and if we were ready at the end of that session to talk about recommendations, great. If we weren't ready, okay. A majority needs to be ready. And if you need more time, then that's fine. But that would have been my preference. Commissioner Buckley.
I understand where you're coming from, Chairman, and I appreciate your zeal for acting swiftly. I agree that it's an urgent matter to get a recommendation back to City Council so we can, you know, avoid the next project with the amount of controversy that something like 777 Yarrow has, has generated. I see that the process we're doing right now, I agree it's a bit painful, but we're going to find out what the commission has consensus as a body to discuss that's pertinent to this site plan request by voting on these motions and coming up with a list. It's my hope that, you know, I've offered a couple motions tonight, including the active one on the floor right now, to pare the list down. I want a very small list. I think with a small list that we're reaching by consensus, that I think we can act swiftly to do the things that I, I think you want. So, sorry if it's a little painful for everyone watching and everyone participating, but I think we're going to get to where we need to be with this process. So I'm definitely keeping my motion on the floor to strike 1427 and the, and the subdivision and plating item, and I hope we just vote on it.
Commissioner Peters.
I'd like to call the vote, move through this. Thank you.
Without objection. So this is the vote on removing, what, two elements? Subdivisions, plats, and something, and...
Yeah, the, the first item to be removed from the list of future discussions would be subdivisions and plating, and the second item to be removed would be discussion about Chapter 14.27.
Ah, sorry, do it again. I always, instead of hit display votes, I hit clear votes. Now display votes. That is three to three, which means the motion fails and that component is still in the list. If there's no further discussion, we'll vote on the main motion. A yes is a approval to agenda, all of the listed items for our next meeting, and a no would be not to. And that motion fails two to four. So, a thought, which is, if you would like to keep going, we can do that and maybe try it the opposite direction, which are things we're actually for as a consensus. Or if people are not ready for that and need more time to think, then we'll take it up at our next meeting. Commissioner Buckley.
Sure. I move that we had agenda an item at our next meeting to discuss the public engagement process through the enhanced development menu.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded discussion. Commissioner Kettner.
I'm very concerned that we do this, and that's what's going to be discussed, and that we won't be discussing other things. And that the parts of the EDM are very minor, not the things that the community was really coming to us with their issues in the major site plan. I think if we get bogged down in those details, we miss the big picture. There is no oversight and no requirement with this. So I would like to make a motion. I want to add to your motion, is what I want to do. I want to add that at our next meeting, we also make an amend, make an agenda item to also discuss criteria for referring major site plans to Planning Commission with public hearings.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend that motion. Discussion on that. Commissioner Buckley.
I am okay with discussing that additional item at the next meeting. I think just given how the last vote went, I'm inclined at this point to agree with our chair that let's try to build the agenda one item at a time. So I'll vote no on this motion to add it to the EDM discussion. But if it was a separate motion standing alone, independent of the EDM, I would vote yes.
Commissioner Kettner.
Oh, right, so that might, sorry.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? This is a motion to amend, Commissioner Buckley's motion, that at the next meeting we discuss an EHM...
EDM.
EDM, sorry, enhanced development menu. The amended motion would be to add discussion of criteria for referring major site plans to the Planning Commission for a hearing. Is that right? Commissioner Peters.
I was, a question for Commissioner Buckley. So you don't support adding it to this, but you would support it as a separate motion to be made after the vote for this? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we're now voting on that motion.
Sorry, I guess I was going to want, ask if Commissioner Kettner wanted to withdraw the motion and then the amendment and then do it again.
Thinking that...
Commissioner Kettner. Commissioner Kettner.
No, let's just -- okay.
Commissioner O'Neill.
What difference does it make if they're separated? I'm just curious if -- why we need to separate them. If the point is to get -- because the EDM, to me, seems, I agree with Commissioner Kettner, a small piece of the development process. So, I don't know. I mean, part of the problem, not that we're talking about a specific development, but we are, sort of. The impetus behind the reason we're having this conversation is because there is no criteria for -- direct criteria for the Planning Director to send a major site plan to Planning Commission, which would then start a public process that would then involve public comment. So, I guess I support it either way, if it stands alone or if it's with us. I'm just curious what difference it makes.
Commissioner Peters, do you still have your light on? Okay. So, my sense is that by making a series of motions about what we can and cannot talk about next time tells me that people are not ready to vote on the actual idea. They're only ready to vote on which ideas we can talk about. I'm wondering if it might be better to simply agenda this again and give people the time that they seem to need to think about all the public engagement that we've gotten, the suggestions, understand the existing law, and then at the next meeting, be ready to make proposals that we could vote on. That seems to me to be more productive rather than a series of motions about what we will or will not be allowed to talk about next meeting. And I'm not quite sure why that doesn't -- that's not apparent to others, but I might be alone. Commissioner Buckley.
Again, Chairman, respectfully, I do appreciate your zeal for getting through this in an orderly and speedy and efficient way to a resolution that I think we all want. Earlier this evening, Commissioner Kettner made a motion to talk about nine things that I wrote down at the next meeting. I thought that was kind of unwieldy. I made a motion to strike one of those things. It passed. I made a motion to strike another one of those things. It passed. I made a motion to strike two more of those things. That list of nine would have gotten down to five. That motion was withdrawn, and then we defeated the whole motion of agending the remaining seven on the list. You said in reaction to that that it would be better to build it up one by one. I'm just trying to go along with that spirit to build it up one by one of what we do want to talk about. I still think that if we just agenda the same broad topic at the next meeting of, you know, that's the same topic that we agended tonight, let's talk about this request from Counselor Stewart about major site plans and parks, we're just going to have this same discussion next time. Like, there's -- it's a shotgun approach, right? There's like nine or 10 different ideas, and I'm trying to prioritize them. I don't want to talk about nine ideas at the next meeting. We're already, in a way, talking about nine ideas tonight, and you see how frustrating it is. Like, I'd rather pick a shorter list, one or two or three, and we'll build that list one by one. That would be the approach I prefer, and that way, we know we're focused in talking on specific things to get us to a point of having a written resolution. We can get to City Council. If we're talking about, say, two or three things, we will get to that written resolution I know you want much faster than if in the next meeting, we all come and talk about these same nine topics. That's my view.
Commissioner O'Neill.
I will say something, though. I accidentally left my light on. I think that Commissioner Buckley is spot on, and I do understand why you wanted to separate them now. I do think that if we don't -- to me, these two items that have been brought up are the most direct line to creating a public process. That is the reason we're supposed to be talking about this. So, for me, those two, at least at this point, make the most sense and are fairly simple, I think.
Commissioner Peters.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Buckley and with Commissioner O'Neill. Thank you.
So, I believe the motion was made to add the discussion of criteria for when to refer major site plans to the Planning Commission for a hearing. That is actually something I would like to talk about, but I don't want that to be the only thing we talk about. I think there are a couple of other good ideas. So, I'm gonna -- I think I'm going to oppose that motion. Anyone else have any comments before we vote? All those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. All right, so that passes four to two, which means that we now have two items that we are going to be talking about if the main motion passes. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Then we'll call for the vote. Commissioner Peters.
I'd like to offer an amendment to add something to that list. I think one of the discussion topics related to, and I don't know exactly the wording, but helping to better define, in general, the discretion of the Planning Director. And I'm interested in feedback from other commissioners on adding that one.
Commissioner Furman.
It feels like a broad question when you talk about the discretion of the Planning Director. I feel like this, the one we just discussed about discussing, I don't know how to phrase it, the point at which a major site plan is sent to the Planning Commission for review. That one seemed like the most direct check on discretion. I guess you'd have to be more specific on what kind of discretion you're concerned about. How's it?
Commissioner Peters.
I know this topic came up, and so I guess I -- it's a question. So, I guess I'm interested in other feedback. Thank you. That was helpful. I appreciate the feedback and commentary.
Commissioner Buckley.
Yeah, I think I'm good now. I think the conversation between Commissioners Furman and Peters answered my question.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Could you refresh my memory on what we're voting on?
Great question. We are not voting yet because I don't think you made a motion. We got a second, but would you like to? Commissioner Peters.
I did not make a motion. I had a question.
Right. But you -- we will invite that motion if you'd like to.
Point of order.
Yes, Commissioner Buckley.
I believe we --
Didn't make an amendment to the motion, just to clarify.
Yeah, I believe we do have a motion on the floor. What I recall happened is I made a motion to discuss public engagement via the enhanced development menu at the next meeting. There was another motion made to amend my motion to add to that discussing at the next meeting criteria by which the Planning Director would refer major site plans to the Planning Commission for approval, and that motion passed. And so, I think we now return to the main motion, which at this point would agenda those two items, the Planning Commission, the Planning Director's criteria for referring things to the Planning Commission and the EDM idea. Those would be the two things that would be on the agenda if the motion that's currently on the floor passes. That's my understanding.
Yeah, no, I agree with that understanding. I was giving Commissioner Peters a chance. She suggested she might want to add another item, and if you do not want to, make a motion to amend, that's fine.
I have one more question because when the list was provided by Commissioner Kettner for that motion, I didn't write everything down. What is there lacking on this list that has not been discussed? Like, because we've gone through everything. We went through two, four, five. Is there any -- what is on that list that hasn't been vetted through this group? That's -- because I didn't write that whole list down.
I think that's a question for Commissioner Kettner.
So, that we haven't already discussed.
Right.
Requiring Planning Commissioner City Council approval for certain projects, but that sort of fits into with the criteria for referring.
Yes.
The what you mentioned, removing other discretionary items.
Which was broader. Yep, I got the feedback on that.
Historical preservation, oh, no, I didn't list that on the list. Sorry. Park overlay.
Park overlay. You mean the zoning for the -- near the parks.
Yeah, it was in response to something that Mr. Furman had said. The other thing that was on that list was the changes to the website.
Park overlay and changes to website. I'd like to -- I'd like to make a motion to add changes to the website.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
To -- motion to amend, to add that, just to be clear.
Yes. Commissioner Kettner?
Oh, sorry. Left over.
Commissioner Peters?
No.
All right, so it is a motion, and again, these are motions about what we intend to talk about.
Add. Yes.
All those in favor of adding website to that. Start voting. That is unanimous, so that item has been added. Commissioner Peters.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the list to add the park overlay.
Is there a second? I think that fails for lack of a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion limiting what we will talk about? Commissioner -- no? I'm torn on this because I think there are several good ideas, and the idea that we're going to vote to limit what we're going to talk about at the next meeting, I think, is not a good approach. If folks aren't ready to talk about the actual ideas, that's fine. But I'm more comfortable if we just agended the item and then took motions individually. And if sub -- I understand, but I'm -- if we wanted to decide whether to make a recommendation to the City Council to amend the subdivision ordinance, make that motion. We'll see if it passes or fails. If you're not ready for it today, setting it for discussion next time, I think it makes more sense to just have that motion next time. The way this is going, you're not going to be able to make that motion next time because it'll be outside the agenda. So, limiting our discussion doesn't seem like the most fruitful way to approach this, but I appear to be alone in that. Commissioner Peters.
Getting tired pushing the wrong buttons here. I don't think that we are limiting it. I think we are putting it on, but I envision an opportunity to add to this list, but we have just.
No, the -- just for clarification, this is a motion to agenda certain subjects, which means we're going to notice the public that only those subjects will be discussed. That's why my suggestion has always been that if we're not ready to act, we agenda the same issue, and all of these other ideas could be considered. But because you are setting this up, the motion is what the agenda will say, that's public notice.
I respectfully disagree in that we can bring up new topics and discuss them at a future meeting. I don't envision completing this at one meeting, and I think this just gives us some direction and some focus for the upcoming meeting, and we can, at that meeting, have other topics. I expect there'll probably be more public input, so I don't see this as limiting. I don't see any limiting factor to it.
Well, let's be clear, because I don't think there is any actual discretion, and we can get Lauren, our attorney, to clarify this, but absolutely, at our next meeting, we could say at yet another meeting down the road, we want to talk about something else. But this approach says at our next meeting, the public has been told, these are the subjects we're going to talk about. So, we do not talk about subjects outside that. That is the way the notice requirements are.
It helps people to prepare, to be able to provide input on these topics, and we can still have other topics. We can -- so, I'll make a motion for topics that have not already been vetted to be discussed at the next meeting as well. I mean, if you need to do it officially, I mean, it's -- it could be done anyways. I don't -- it's not limiting that discussion. It's just giving some focus on what we are going to discuss, and then we can still bring in new topics. The -- it's, you know, we've already vetted the ones that have come up, so they're not going to come up. We're not going to be, you know, going through density again. We're not going to be going through these again. But if there's new topics that have not been discussed, it doesn't preclude our putting them on and for the next meeting after that and discussing because I think these are all ones that we agree on, and I think it's a pretty good -- it's going to take time to work through those and probably more than one meeting anyways, and if we want to add to the list, then those motions can be made for future meetings. So, under no circumstance does this limit that.
We're saying the same thing. Let's just be clear. For a future meeting, yes. It does not -- this motion and this approach is tying us up for the next meeting, but yes, if we want to have yet another meeting where different things are discussed, absolutely. But those will also have to be properly noticed. My original suggestion was that we re-agenda the general topic, which would have allowed a discussion on all these issues. Yes.
May I interject? And you're hitting on the word "general." And if we want to add Lauren to the conversation, we can. I think Lauren is agreeing with Chair Kolkmeier because what her recommendation is that you make another motion to include something that's more general, additional recommendations for discussion. So, you have your list, and then you have another item that includes additional recommendations.
Correct.
So, that doesn't -- but it's not tying you. So, Lauren's saying if you list the items, that's what you're talking about. So, if you want to go beyond that list, you have to have an agenda item.
Another agenda item. Correct. And that's why I said we could make a motion for that. Perfect.
Today?
Yes. So, I'll make a motion to open up for other suggestions at the next meeting, that we can accept suggestions at the next meeting as well. So, we discuss the ones that we've talked about, and then...
Commissioner, you do not need a motion for that. We can, at the next meeting.
Okay.
Decide to agenda things for future meetings.
Perfect. I think we have a lot to talk about for the next meeting, and I look forward to those discussions.
Commissioner Kettner.
I would like to make a motion to add to the next agenda, an item. I -- Chair, this is, I think this may make you feel a little more comfortable in case we are so quick as to actually get through all three of those agenda items.
Four.
Three. So, so far, we have, I believe, three.
The website.
Three, because the website we added, right? Okay, we have three. To make an agenda item four, I kind of wondered, shoot, it napped right now, of course. An agenda item four to discuss other topics as the commission wishes in relation to Counselor Stewart's request for review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that the motion to discuss three items also have a provision that says, and we can talk about any other... have a provision that says, and we can talk about any other related items.
That's not what I understood the motion to be, that, I understood the motion to mean that there would be a fourth item.
Yes.
That would be related to any other topic that we find pertinent to the request from Council to study proactive public engagement for site plans. Thank you.
Discussion. Go ahead and vote. That passes five to one. So are we ready for the main motion?
Yes.
Go ahead and vote on those subjects to be agendaed. And that passes unanimously.
See, we agreed all along.
I will note that that has the exact same effect as what I originally suggested, which was re-agending the topic. So I am, it's an awful lot of time to spend on motions to set agenda items, but it is the will of the Commission. That completes item four, and then I think we have general businesses next, item five. I don't know if you have any scheduling things, Mr. Rice?
Actually, I forgot to include something under general business, and we're kind of experiencing it this evening with the Zoom difficulties. So after a couple council meetings, City Council is looking at if, they're not gonna have a, continue a Zoom participation piece. So Liquid Speaks will still allow, I, I think my understanding is continued public input through a City Council meeting, and then if you want to make call, or you want to add that comment, you can either call in or type into Liquid Speaks, and then you can come in person and make comments. So they're not running a Zoom meeting concurrent with their meetings. Media Services, Jonathan Kirsch and Lauren reached out to me and asked the Planning Commission the same thing. They, the Council in the past had counselors, I have to, counselor, commissioner, that were participating, they weren't in chambers. We're, most of us are in chambers. I can only think of a couple commissioners that have used the Zoom protocol. So Lauren has to operate two cameras, one for Channel Eight and then one for Zoom. So there's some additional technical setup. If we don't have somebody remote, then we won't open a Zoom meeting as well. That way, it simplifies her task. We tried to do it tonight to include Lauren Stanek. She and I are communicating through Microsoft Teams right now, and not only was there no video, she did, or there was video, but she wasn't getting audio. So the Zoom meeting wasn't any help, and they had problems with that on Monday. So, long, long story short, if there is not a commissioner wanting to participate via Zoom, I won't be opening the meeting in, in future meetings. It'll only be opened on an as-needed basis. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Peters.
So does that mean that it's not being recorded still?
Nope, nope. The only thing it means is we're all here, there's no reason the host is in meeting. So it's still recorded through Channel Eight. You can actually pull it up right now. I think it's a 30 or 40 second delay and watch it on Liquid Speak. So it'll continue to be recorded, it'll continue to be posted onto Liquid Speak, so there's no change about the public process. It just affects commissioners and staff.
Okay, and it's still livestreamed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other general business items? Commissioner Kettner.
Thank you. I had an interesting question this week from somebody in Lakewood asking me about a, they had seen a list showing a court case that the Planning Commission was a party to. We had actually received notification a little more than a year ago about a complaint being filed in District Court. The District Court documents actually show that the Planning Department, not the Planning Commission, was the named party or one of the named parties. I did ask our attorney to provide the documents, the court documents, and I wanted to mention this publicly. I think it's important, and unfortunately, somebody mentioned culture, and I know culture changes, take a long time. The response I got when asked for those documents, that it was that it would be too time-consuming to download them and share them. I mentioned this to an attorney friend, and while we were talking, in fewer than five minutes, the attorney friend was able to download and send me the documents in that case. So we either have a problem with technology or a problem with the willingness of sharing the court documents. We talked about trust earlier, and we've heard about trust with the community. I honestly was just curious. Now it makes me wonder, is somebody trying to hide something? You know, these little things do start to add up. So to the community member who asked about Planning Commission v. Kettner, the case was settled last week, and it was actually the Planning Department that was named and not the Planning Commission. Thank you for the time.
Commissioner Peters? Commissioner Kettner, your light still on? Did you have something else? Thank you all. I believe that at 10:40.
May I, so as I was talking, talking and reading, so an update from Lauren. She will actually be remote through the first meeting in April, so she'll be back in the office on April 9th. So if Zoom works with us, I don't have the date, the next meeting in March, and then the first meeting in April, she'll, she'll be remote.
Do we have any staff projects that will, are anticipated for our next meeting?
For next meeting, no. The, I apologize, I'm looking at my calendar. What we have from a staff standpoint is April 17th, we'll be coming to you with a special use permit, so you, you don't have a staff item. And then I hope to have one in, in May. We had a little, fortunately, we caught it with the notice, so we were looking at early May, it may be late May, June, before we get to that next item.
Okay. If nothing further, the Planning Commission is adjourned at 10:16. Thank you.
Thank you.